It's one o'clock and I'd like to call the council briefing work session in order to order. And I think maybe what we start with, before we start with the town manager, the updates from the town manager that I know several members of council, can you hear me okay on this? Several members of council wanted to hold this briefing. So perhaps we can go around and discuss, you know, what you would like to talk about at the briefing. I think that would be nice. And then we can get in. And if we've all, if some several people have a lot, then we can go and, you know, do one at a time, depending on what everybody is thinking. So John?
Not clear on that.
Okay.
Can you clarify? So is this our comments or all the topics?
If you have topics that you wanted to have at this briefing, then you can just let us know and we'll know what the topics are. And then we can go around and maybe talk about each one of those and take turns on those.
I actually sort of disagree because it was agended as briefings from the manager. So I don't know that since the agenda had no contents to it, I don't know what the manager intends to bring us. And I'd like to hear his bulleted list of his topics. So I know.
Well, what we can do is not if you don't have anything in particular.
No, I have a ton of things in particular, but if the goal of the meeting is the briefing from the manager, then we should hear his bulleted list and then perhaps.
Well, I'd like to hear everyone's list and then the manager can come in, but we can vote on that if you guys want.
In detail.
Yeah, just bullet points on what perhaps you wanted to discuss at the meeting. And that way to just bring us all up to date on, you know, why we're having the meeting and Rob will be able to to chime in there then after each one of us have gone. So if it's okay with everyone, we'll go ahead and have John start.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So these microphones are wireless. Am I on?
Doesn't.
Okay, I just can't hear the, you can hear me, I can't hear you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Here's my bullet points. Number one, I would like to talk about Coretta and the feedback we're getting from town that people don't like Coretta. So I'd like to hear from the council. What they, if they agree with that, if they like Coretta, don't like Coretta, and specifically if you don't like it, what it is you don't like. And what are we as a council going to do about it to make sure it doesn't happen again? That's one. I'd like to discuss the fact that we're not getting too many comments from the town manager and staff at council meetings. Comments from the town manager, very brief and virtually none from staff. I think it would be helpful if we got more from staff at council meetings. Three, I think we did more efficient council meetings. And the last, I'd like to talk about this, how we have our discussions because when we have a discussion as an agenda item and we invite public comment, it takes a lot of time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Diana?
I was looking forward to the work session because I thought that we would go through the agenda items that are on for the council meeting that's coming up. So I brought my information for the agenda items and questions that I had and things that I would like to talk about for the agenda items for the upcoming meeting. And then generally, just for comments, I wanted to discuss different, different resident complaints that I received on numerous topics. So and how to how the staff would address those.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
I'm always concerned about the management or the managing the time in council meetings. And I think so far, we have not been able to come up with a good solution. We are trying to limit people, but you know, if you don't adhere it and it's not a dead stop, so what it is, like John, for example, he said, Diana, you talked for 17 minutes. That was true, but you kept on talking even longer. That was true too. So that's one of the things we should not.
Just curious.
Me too. I want to know who you looked at. All right. So that has always been. And to think about Coretta right now, I think, yeah, why do people not like it? Because all the counselors signed off on it. As a matter of fact, it was, the motion was done by Alex Cook, who was not the mayor at that time and couldn't make motions. And everybody agreed with it. And we thought it was wonderful to get a $500,000 gift from Coretta to be used for the expansion of the police department, which is amazing that that can fit all these people in this little building plus all the material. And now I think I personally don't mind Coretta. And what I would just tell them, please put a few trees in front of it so that people don't see it because they seem to complain about the bulk and the mast, et cetera, as they talked about Ocean Tri, Ocean One.
I'd like to do a point of order. Weren't we just say the different things we were going to talk about?
Mary Ann, we'll come back to specific.
Okay.
And then you can give your opinion on those. So.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you wanted to put on?
No, I think the others have enough.
Okay, great. Dee, do you want to give us some bullet points?
Sure.
Which I forgot to start.
These are not necessar-- can you hear me, Caitlin? Okay. It's a strange audio. In no particular order, I was, these are just what occurred to me is important to discuss. I'll start with posting to the town website, campaign treasurer and finance reports for any of the candidates or people who run, like to talk about that. We got an email from resident Don Felicella to that topic. Pertinent to the vulnerability assessment, I'd like council to discuss how to help the Juneau Ocean Walk community. They expressed concern about flooding, not just a little bit of water, but a month worth of 18 inch water in their community. And I'd like, you know, council to, you know, ultimately have staff look into, you know, the town's responsibility and what we can do to assist them to alleviate the flooding in their community. I believe that this briefing should have had a bulleted agenda. I didn't know how to prepare for this. If we're calling the meeting a briefing from the town manager, then we shouldn't have a blank agenda. We should have, at the very least, just bullets of a topic. So, you know, it can't be this free form or we wind up making this another inefficient meeting. Let's see. As far as reporting goes, I, you know, Joe LaBello, our former town manager, he works with Lake Clark Shores now, and he creates a manager's report. And it's really great. Have any of you looked at Joe's report that he, he posts a manager's report monthly to the Lake Clark Shores website, and I can send a link to that. And it's just an outline similar to the activity report. And I think that, you know, this council should ask our town managers to sort of report out on important matters so that we don't necessarily have to sit like this. We can get some bullet points and we can talk about that. Future for the dais seating, now that we have a new town attorney, I was watching other town council meetings, and their town attorney sits either near the mayor or the town manager for some reason, Lynn was, you know, all the way at the other end of the dais. We may want to talk about rearranging our seating to let our new town attorney integrate better into our group. The master plan workshop that's coming up with all the number of volunteers, 22, I think, do we have 20, 20 something community, community volunteers to work with us with the council with the master plan? We still have no framework for that. We have no structure to what they're going to do. We have no tasks that we're going to assign to them. And I'd like the council to think about what we want to ask these volunteers of our town to do so that, again, we have a purpose to that meeting and they know what to come prepared with to the table so that they can best help us decide on how to move forward with the master plan. You want me to keep going?
Sure.
CMA code review. This is something our town attorney can help us with. I know a lot of the seven items that we selected for code review are impinged on by Senate Bill 180, but perhaps, you know, Gemma can give us insight onto, you know, what level, if any, we can move forward with that code review and to what extent some of those are impacted by 180. The Coast Guard conversation regarding the timing of the bridge openings. I believe our last direction to the town manager, town staff, was to reach out to the county and have them do a joint letter with us requesting that the Coast Guard change its bridge openings or reduce its bridge openings. And I'd like follow up from the town manager on what those conversations were with the Coast Guard and with the county and where we stand with that. And that's it.
Thank you. I'm not going to add anything to that because we've got a great list right now. And we just, we had to get through all of these. But I think, Rob, can you or Gemma tell us, can, we cannot make decisions here. We can discuss these issues, but we can't make final determinations on direction, correct?
Yeah. So you, you can discuss things and you can have a consensus. No vote is binding. You can't vote to take any action. Now, you can give direction to the manager or to me. So that is in your purview all the time. So if you all agree and then say, Gemma, go write a resolution, you're not voting on the resolution. You're just giving me direction to go do it and bring it back to you for a vote. That would be fine. Same thing. You could say, manager, go negotiate with these people. And then obviously we'd still have to come back for a vote. So there's some latitude with giving us direction because we work for you, but no votes can be taken, no official action, but discussions, consensus. And then at the next meeting, if you decide to take a vote, this discussion is sufficient for sunshine purposes. So you could, let's say you just talk about, I don't know, Coretta, right? And then you guys decide you're going to vote to give it a flag. You want to give it a blue flag. You guys have a big discussion today and at the next meeting, someone could make a motion and say, we motioned make it a blue flag. And you guys all say, yep, great. And you've met sunshine because the discussion was today.
And my only hesitation on making big decisions is because we don't have the public that can be involved. So I think, you know, deciding amongst, can I, no, they're not allowed to talk though. So I think what we have to do is make sure we notice it and that the general public has the ability to come in and speak, you know, on that topic, because that's really in the sunshine. And I know we're in the sunshine now because we've noticed this, but I always think it's good to have, you know, our residents be able to, you know, make comments about whatever we're doing that we're changing. And I agree, we can discuss it as much as we want, but final, any final decisions like a resolution, that's pretty big, you know, to say, let's get Gemma to do a resolution without input from our residents, I guess.
Right. So just so you know, you can't take final action on a resolution without public comment, right? So you can't take final action like, so you would have to bring it to a meeting for a vote.
Right.
And, and for public comment.
And then, Rob, I know you have answers to some of these. So I think that I would assume, I don't know for sure, but we'll go ahead and let you go next. And maybe you can hit on some of these topics and, and then we can take one at a time as, if other people have questions on it.
All right, sure. Maybe what I'll start with is I'll just kind of run down the list of some of the things that, you know, staff had thought we might talk about in this setting. When the meeting was originally requested, of course, there was no concrete direction from council as to what we wanted to do here. So moving forward, I'll first say that from a meetings structure, effectiveness and efficiency perspective, what we thought we might do is use it as a pre-agenda session. So it would occur the week before the normal regular meeting, and we would have our agenda materials and council members could go through them and ask questions. And we can make sure that those questions are as addressed as we possibly can in that particular setting in hopes that we would make the regular meetings more effective and more efficient because some of the discussion that otherwise takes place on regular meeting nights potentially could be resolved in that setting instead.
If I may briefly, so the manager and I had a really good discussion about this. And I, that's, I don't think the plan for today. That's just an idea that he and I talked about potentially proffering today for you all to think about. So to have effectively a workshop meeting a week before, it could be set up like this, you could sit there however you want, but that would be the topic. And it would be every month, you would do the same thing. You have the workshop, you go over the agenda, you just, you have your full discussion. If an item is not ready or needs more information. So let's say, for example, there's an item and you say, where, I want pictures, I want renderings. You can say, staff, get that ready for next week. So it gives them time to get it done. It also then should make the meetings go shorter so your comments are not cut. Because I know that happens a lot. And certainly the public wants to hear from you and the public comes and speaks to you and they want their concerns to be brought to the meeting. So we sort of, in the interest of ensuring you all have the opportunity to speak to the public and speak for the public, to prioritize their time and your time, that was the idea, just to put on the table. Obviously, we're not wedded to this idea, but it has worked in other places. It does tend to make the real meeting, the voting meeting, much more efficient because you've hashed out everything at the workshop. And then if something's not ready for the agenda, it can get pulled. You could say, put this on next month. We're not ready for this. You know, we need more information from the Coast Guard about the bridge. So let's put it on for December. So that's sort of the concept, but not for today, just as a concept for future.
I think it's a wonderful concept. We haven't tried it yet. And anything, you know, to make the meetings more efficient, we should try because people talk to me and they say they can't even endure sitting there. They have a hard time doing it on Zoom. They need to break it down in three sessions. I think we are not consumer friendly. We want to communicate with the community and then we make it so as boring and laborious as we can. That's not the way to do it. I personally feel this way.
Thank you. We're going to.
I agree with, I agree with the workshop idea.
Let's let Rob continue if we can.
Oh, Mary Ann, you see, now she was allowed to weigh in on it. So why am I not allowed?
Do you want to self away in on that topic then? So let's try, let's try to keep our comments until after Rob talks, if we can. And you can comment on it. Just let's Rob get through his comments and then we can come back to that.
Structure to this. So either we all comment on comments that are made or nobody comments on comments, but you can't have some people be allowed and other people not.
So let's keep that in mind, everyone. Okay. Just wait for Rob to finish and then we can go around the room. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. With respect to the Coast Guard, well, the Coast Guard has, has denied the request to adjust the bridge because they don't believe that the traffic counts warrant that. I think that information was available to us the last time we discussed this. And the general discussion amongst council was, well, see if we can write another letter. And I had suggested that it would be a good idea to try and build consensus with larger, perhaps more influential partners to see if they too were interested in having the Coast Guard adjust their schedule. So I did reach out to Palm Beach County as a potential partner in doing this. There was some reference that they had a previous interest in having the Coast Guard adjust the bridge schedule. So my initial meeting with them, they did indicate that yes, they did at one point have an interest in having the Coast Guard adjust the schedule, but they explained to me that was not something that they were interested in on a sustained basis. They had a project that was going on. And as part of the maintenance of traffic operations for that project, they were asking the Coast Guard to adjust the bridge opening and closing schedule. They said with that project having been completed, they honored my request to look at the traffic data again, but consistent with their prior findings, they don't find that traffic volumes or issues warrant a change in the bridge operations. Therefore, they weren't prepared to participate in generating a letter to the Coast Guard, asking them to do something that they don't believe they have the data to support. So as recently as about a week and a half ago, I met with them on Zoom and we discussed it again. And they committed to taking another look, fresh look at the data, same kind of thing we did when we looked at the Coast Guard bridge and sent our, our last letter to the Coast Guard, saying, well, look, you guys are looking at the data, maybe you're not looking at, you know, peak season, maybe you're not looking at peak hours of the day. Can you go back, take one more look at the data, isolate those segments of, of the day and of the year, and determine whether or not something arises in your analysis that might help leverage the, the Coast Guard's position on the matter currently. And so they're in the process of doing that now. They said, okay, Rob, yeah, we'll do that. And they'll go back and pull the data. They did not sound frankly, very terribly optimistic. As part of this conversation, another thing I did was to reach out to the town of Palm Beach to see how they were successful getting this done. And what I was advised from their leadership was, well, you know, they've been trying to do it for a long time, not having much success. But then what began to happen was the United States Secret Service began to close bridges to facilitate movement of the president to, you know, one way and the other, and restrict traffic flow and this kind of thing. And so when they started doing that, Secret Service closing these other bridges, the one bridge was having exceptional problems with handling the traffic. So as a consequence, Palm Beach then, the town of Palm Beach, not Palm Beach County, reapproached the Coast Guard with some of their federal officials based on the Secret Service actually closing other bridges and said, look, this is no longer just our concerns about traffic and the need to change the bridge opening and closing schedule. This is something you guys are actually creating at the federal level. So the federal government should help us to solve it. And that was what they needed to get over the hurdle to address the Coast Guard opening, closing times on the bridge was the backdrop of Secret Service actually causing closes in bridges that were amplifying and in the data analysis perspective, causing the problems that they were seeing necessitating the response. So all of that to say, what the town of Palm Beach did and their success is not what we're experiencing here. And the county thus far has not found data to support the Coast Guard changing the opening and closing schedule. The Coast Guard said the same thing prior to us reaching back out to the county, and that conversation is continuing. Let's see, what else did we have on, on the manager's comments here? We're looking into the, the request and staff, you know, initially said, yeah, why not? To kind of make our activities and events a little bit more sustainable, looking at compostable cups and things of that, biodegradable cups. And as part of that, though, we reached out to waste management and we find, you know, they don't do anything with them that makes them environmentally sustainable. So in other words, we would be paying more for these products and not actually cultivating the outcomes that we would be intending to cultivate by using them. So we're still trying to work through that in a little bit more detail. But if the products are going to cost us three to six times more than what we're getting now, and yet they're still going to either be incinerated or landfilled where they don't get the oxygen and the, the biological activity to properly break them down, you know, financially, it doesn't make sense. And in a way, it's almost like greenwashing if we, you know, banner, we're using compostable and biodegradable products. But oh, by the way, once waste management gets them, they're throwing them in the incinerator. We'll have to maybe figure out some other things that we can do if that's the reality. So we'll report back once we finish those conversations with waste management and others. But we certainly would like to reduce our, our environmental impact when it comes to the events that were, that we're handling, you know, reusable cups instead of plastic bottles, you know, we don't have to worry about waste management at that point because we're, we're using our own things and washing them and using them. So there's other things we can do that generate the same kinds of benefits and potentially even greater benefits. But there's trade offs with everything. So we'll, we'll continue to walk that path. Sure.
I did reach out to waste management and got that they do, although they encourage the eco friendly, they said you have to really look into the products to make sure that they can be, they're degraded within the least amount timeframe. Because they have some that they say biodegradable, compostable, all different products that could be, take up to 10 years for them to fully go away. So they go just recommend looking into the detailed products themselves and how long it takes for them to stick with the least amount. And the cost could vary in that matter.
Thank you, Caitlin.
And I don't know necessarily that we'll go through this entire memorandum right now, but I wanted to share with everyone on council, the CMA's update on, and not CMA's update, Frank's update on the CMA contract, but in high level fashion. There were about seven different topics selected by council for CMA to do zoning code amendments. Frank's memorandum talks about the status of each of those and what percentage complete there are. He ultimately, and I don't know that when he prepared this, he had the opportunity to speak with your team yet or not. So take a look at his recommendation. But his recommendation was, at this point, not moving forward with the proposed code text amendments that CMA has thus far come up with, simply because they would be getting more restrictive or more burdensome. But the question of what they can do instead and/or what they can do in parallel and what risk we would incur or not incur is one that still needs to be fleshed out. But I at least wanted to be responsive to the request for an update, make sure everyone gets a copy of that. If you have any questions, after you get an opportunity to review it, then by all means, reach back out to me and Frank and we'll, we'll schedule something with you and or bring it back to council at an appropriate stage, informed by some considerations by Gemma and her team as well. So if you could pass that around for me, that'd be great.
So for an item like this, is this something that as we're talking about it, we can give consensus officially or the legal team for Gemma to review it?
I think Gemma will do that. Yes.
Anyway, we don't need to give.
No, in fact, that's what I would be asking Gemma to do offline, whether there were consensus or not. Well, if, if, obviously if council said, no, don't do it, then we, that would be a different thing. Yeah.
Yes, I will do it. No consensus needed.
Thank you. Another thing I'll circulate, and we won't necessarily have time to go through it today, but one of the objectives that, that we've talked about, the clerk and I, is the need to have kind of a, an agenda, not an agenda, an orientation for both candidates and council members. We'd like to have the council member or, and or candidate orientations take place during the election cycle so that people who are running for office understand what they're getting into, what the roles and responsibilities might be, once they get into a prospective elective role representing the town of Juneau Beach, and just have opportunity to meet some of our staff that are involved most closely with town council members, ask some questions, run through the booklet, things like the protocols. You'll see a variety, code of ethics is in here. We'll do a presentation normally in coordination with legal counsel so that they can help educate prospective members about the sunshine law before they actually take seat for the first time. It's worked very well in other communities where you have just, just an orientation session. Existing members certainly can come and attend as a refresher or for information that they haven't received in the past. And any candidate for office would be certainly welcome and encouraged to attend that session and would receive one of the booklets. And again, just be oriented to what it means to be a local elected official. It's a really substantial duty, comes with a lot of requirements that people sometimes running for office have no idea even apply. So helping to them ahead of time instead of once they've, again, been, been appointed or elected rather, is, is a good thing. So we've got copies of this. Again, I don't think we have time today, given all the interest in other topics, but take a look through it. If there's things that are missing that you feel would be helpful, beneficial, let, let me and Caitlin know. And we're happy to add more stuff. I mean, we're, we're not necessarily saying this is the best thing since sliced bread yet, but we're saying it's a good start and we need to do it and get it scheduled so people can actually participate in it.
Is that plan?
This would be the orientation packet.
So you made a draft?
Yeah, a draft. Yes. And it'll be labeled draft. And we have copies right up here for everyone to receive one. I just don't think we have enough time today, right now, to go through it page by page and say, yay, nay, what have you. But certainly are asking for each council member to take a look at it. Good, bad, add, subtract. We're certainly open to suggestions in that regard and even from Gemma, if she's had prior experience doing the same thing in other jurisdictions. And even from Gemma, if she's had prior experience doing the same thing in other jurisdictions. Let's see here. I met, I believe it was yesterday with Chief Rowley and Chief Kennedy. Chief Kennedy is the chief administrator for Palm Beach Fire. They have a legislative initiative that they wanted us to hopefully support. And so I'd be looking for consensus today to, you know, go ahead and draft letters to our state elected officials to help support that bill. In brief summary, what's happening is they're a little bit concerned that, one, they're seeing more and more annexations and they believe that might ramp up should the state start cutting revenues and it changing how property taxes are allocated, things of that nature. So what that would mean for us in Juneau Beach is if areas within their service territory get annexed by communities that have fire prevention services of their own, the money goes, the money that's otherwise supporting Palm Beach Fire goes along with those properties that are annexed to the new jurisdiction. As a result, what would transpire is Palm Beach County would increasingly have the same, be trying to maintain the same level of service to everywhere where they provide it, but would decrease revenues over time as more and more annexation occurs to areas that have their own fire services. That's problematic on many levels because what happens is the remaining people who are served by Palm Beach Fire would have to pay more for Palm Beach Fire County Services. Because if it's the same service, same number of trucks, same number of people, but fewer tax revenues coming into their revenue stream to pay for them, the people remaining have to pay more to achieve that same level of service. So either A, Palm Beach County Fire would have to decrease their level of service commensurate with the reduction in revenues. And then they'd be also confronted with this notion of, well, what if a portion of their territory gets annexed and it has a fire station in it? Either A, they're closing the fire station and transitioning it to the other fire company, which they may or may not want it, depending on what their coverage is. Or B, they're maintaining that fire station because it not only serves that part of the community that was annexed, but it serves other adjacent areas that the county still has to provide service for. So they may end up providing free service, in other words, to an annexed community based on the location of their fire station. And not only would it be free to that new entity, but the other people would be paying more to subsidize that service. So they're seeing this whole series of problems unfolding potentially. And they have some legislation that just says, if a community now served by Palm Beach Fire is annexed into another one, then they continue to be compensated and maintain jurisdictional control from a fire perspective for that area. And anyone that is already entering into an intermunicipal agreement with Palm Beach County, this would be unaffected. So in other words, let's say that the town of Juneau Beach annexes a residential community that we currently don't have.
I can't hear, there's static in the background.
So in the case of Juneau Beach, if we were to annex a community into Juneau Beach, it would have no impact on us because we're already covered by an intergovernmental agreement with Palm Beach County. And none of this legislation would apply. The only time it applies is where areas being annexed and Palm Beach County is losing revenue. In which case it protects their revenue and protects their jurisdictional control of that annexed area. So we're looking for council to say, okay, yeah, we'd like to protect Juneau Beach's interests. We'd like to shield our taxpayers from paying more money to support the same level of services. And we certainly would like to shield our taxpayers from having to pay for services that someone else is now getting for free simply because of where the stations are located. So looking for consensus on that point. Do you want me to wait on that? And I can distribute a copy of both the bill summary and the bill language itself.
I'd like to review it and bring it back.
Yeah, I think there's an urgency in this a little bit because they're going to be going to the delegation, the Palm Beach County delegation, so that they can get this resolved for Palm Beach days and get approval from that. So, you know, we can, I don't know what the timing on that was. Do you know?
No, they didn't say the specific timing. But I suspect that if our members wanted to take a few days to review it and got back with me early next week, even if it's individually, could we do it? I mean.
So it doesn't need to be an agenda item?
No, I mean, to write a letter to.
Yeah. I would recommend that they ratify the letter. Either approve it at the next meeting and say, go ahead and write this letter. Or if there's consensus, you write the letter, then they ratify it after the fact. There would, we would want council action because there could be a broader implication. We haven't read the legislation and right now we don't have our own fire service. But we do have our own police department. And if we did annex more properties and we wanted our own fire service ever, I don't know how this could impact it. So if we ever, I don't know, wanted to add 5,000 more people, maybe we would want our own fire service. So I'll just put that on the table. I think it's worth consideration for, I don't know your long-term annexation strategy. But, and maybe you don't have one. But I just think, at some point, someone should give direction and there should be a vote, whether it's before or after.
And our meeting's on the 12th, so I think you have time to review it.
Before the 12th, we'll have it back on the 12th.
Can we have it as an agenda item on the 12th?
Caitlin, we can still add it for the 12th, correct?
If you want to bring it up during comments from staff, if we send it via email or if you want it revised.
Or when's the December meeting?
December 10.
Can we have it on the December agenda or?
I think they're meeting with the delegation November 17th is what I heard. So.
Can we get confirmation on that?
Can I ask a, yeah, I'm not.
I would like, I think it's prudent to review it. And like, I agree with Gemma, she doesn't know what the legislation is.
But will you have time to review it for our meeting next Wednesday? Is that enough time?
I'd like a legal opinion by then also, or legal input.
Gemma, the language of the bill is pretty straightforward itself. What Gemma has referenced though, is some suggestion that there's longer term implications that you may want to consider, such as, will we ever want our own fire department? The implications of what the Palm Beach County Fire personnel are telling us are not long range implications in their view. These are nearer term issues. And we will not know the answer to the question about whether we might want our own fire department in the future for quite some time, I suspect. So against that backdrop, we are rolling the dice on accepting increases in our taxes as service areas from Palm Beach County Fire get annexed into other communities based on some belief that we'll know before we have to write a letter to Tallahassee that we want our own fire department in the future. And I would present to you, that's highly unlikely that we'll have an answer to that question. And therefore, it's a little bit simpler than that.
There may be other caveats.
Yeah. I'm not saying legal should not review it. I just wanted to cover the base of having our own fire department being a potential issue, which legal counsel is correct, that may have implications later on. But I'm just highlighting how much later on that is and what level of information might be necessary to make an informed decision if that is a linchpin. And I'm just saying right now, given how legislation moves and how Tallahassee moves, we don't have that luxury.
And I think the chances of us having our own fire department are very, very slim. So if we think that, then we can kind of move forward.
We shouldn't be able to review the risk involved, whether decision A, decision B, then what's the risk decision A, what's the risk decision B? And it's going to require reading the language first. So that shouldn't be overly burdensome and we can report back at our next meeting.
And John, I'll let you go here in a second. But the decision kind of so far is to go ahead and have everyone review it and then bring it back for the November 12th meeting. Go ahead, John.
Thank you.
No, it's on. It's on.
Here's how this is going to shake out. It's our fire department in our town. There's no way this council is going to do anything that our fire department does not want us to do. If they want us to do it, we're going to agree with them. I don't have to read it. We're going to vote for it. They want it, it's our fire department. They asked us for it, we're hand in hand partners, we're part of the family. We're going for it. That's how it's going to end up. So.
John, I totally agree with you. They're in our town, they provide such a great service, being so local. We get that fire truck, that new fire truck, that's going to, you know, the ladder goes up even higher than it is now. And, you know, to me, this is a difference in the mileage rate going up for them, which affects our citizens. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I totally agree. We're going to do what our fire department wants. But it would be, I think that it would be, it would not be prudent to approve something without reading it first. So I don't see why that's a big deal. Okay.
I agree with Diana. This isn't a question of whether or not we like the fire trucks or like the fire department. It's about due diligence on our part as a government agency.
And Mary Ann, sorry, I was going to let Mary Ann have a chance. Yeah. So we definitely will give everybody a chance to read it. Go ahead, Rob.
And I think we can bring it back for manager's comments at the November meeting. And as legal counsel has indicated, we could get consensus at that point to go ahead and write the letter if council is interested in doing so, after having read it and considered it, the bill that is. And assuming that council does provide consensus to draft and send the letter, then we could bring it back at the December meeting for more of a formal vote and adoption of the letter. So in other words, we can potentially meet the Palm Beach County Fire Department's timeline and still support the need for council to review it before, you know, they actually provide consensus direction.
Hey, Rob, did you have anything else to add to your list?
No, I think that's really about it for now. I'd like to go through the council member questions and comments.
Okay, John, we're going to start with yours, Coretta feedback. Do you want to go ahead and start? And you can give us all some questions and we'll just go around.
Thanks, sure. What we heard from the master plan is that there's almost like consensus in town. People don't like Coretta. That's what Dana Little reported to us. And I'd like to say, to find out how we feel as a council, do we like Coretta? And if we don't, if there's things that we don't like about Coretta, what are we doing to prevent another Coretta? Because we have a couple more Coretas coming down the pike at us. And if we want to do something to change the outcome, we got to get on it. So I'd just like to find out from the council, are we satisfied with that project? Or did we find it less than satisfactory and we want a different outcome? Would you mind sharing that? What do you think?
Okay, Diana, you want to start with that?
Yes, I too have heard from the residents that they don't like Coretta. I think that there are several things that we can do and we can do them immediately, draft the language and have it as an overlay district that's voluntary until we are able to amend our codes with the Senate Bill 180 being lifted or the legislature amending it. So it's not so overbroad. So some of the things that we can do now is the underground parking for Coretta allowed this structure to be so big that it goes setback to setback. And so we could have underground parking as a variance instead of as a right. And currently, anyone who asks for underground parking gets it. Underground parking is more expensive. It has, you know, it has a risk involved. So I think that, I think that that's something that's reasonable to do. Another thing for Coretta is the scale was not clear when it was reviewed by P and Z and by town council. I mean, I think some people can read, read the one dimensional plans and figure out how that scale is going to impact with the surrounding buildings. Currently with our building codes, we don't require renderings of the surrounding buildings. I think we should require renderings of the surrounding buildings so that, to scale, so that we know what it looks like. We should also do the 3D GIS scene view. That's on the council agenda for this time coming up. It gives you spatial characteristics for the surrounding areas. And it provides that three dimensional view so you can see whether the scale is in line with the surrounding buildings. And then potentially you can come up with mitigation and solutions as to what you could do to make it more fit, more fitting within the context of the community. The setbacks, that's a little more difficult. Coretta is a five story building and the setback is 45 feet. When I've heard, you know, when people drive by, they feel like the building is falling on top of them. It is setback 45 feet and meets our code requirements. So do we need bigger setbacks? Could we require, you know, maybe the swales to be in the front of the building and have more green space or do a berm? I particularly like the FPL building because it has, on universe, when you drive by, there's a berm that's vegetated, so you don't even see the parking. The underground parking here was slated as, oh, this is a benefit to you because you don't see the cars. Well, there's other ways not to see the cars. So those are just a few of my suggestions and I'd like to hear from others. But I do think these are things we can do right now and as an overlay with incentives. Maybe the incentive could be less landscaping or the incentive could be less parking spaces. And then, but you comply with these things in this overlay district. That way we'd have the code written already. And then soon as Senate Bill 180 goes away, we could have the two readings and adopt it. Thank you.
Ideas for the future, they will not impact right now Coretta. You want to know what we can do now? Yes. Okay, but I wish, and I told you why. I wish they would start their landscaping. Because like for example, at Ocean One, it looked terrible in the beginning. I mean, we were all appalled at it. And as soon as the trees went in, it looked nice. I don't even see anymore the buildings, neither from Route One, US One, nor from Ocean Drive. It blends in. And I think the same thing will be done or should be done. And I'm sure they will do it because they want to sell all the units with Coretta. That's the only thing we can take a story away or part of a building away. It's too late now. It was approved, it happened, we all saw the plans. And, you know, it would be better if we now accept it as a fact rather than trying to. We are even pushing the people more into disliking it, as a matter of fact, rather than saying, just wait when the trees and the landscaping coming. When there will be a sculpture there and you can sit there and you can watch. It will be, we should take an initiative to make this thing a success because it's there. You're not going to bomb it out or to do. So it is our attitude a little bit to calm the people down. Sure, we can, for the future, we can do all kinds of ideas to prevent the things that we now deem to be mistakes not to happen again. But for Coretta, it's too late. Accept it, deal with it. It's like in playing cards. You get a hand dealt and you make the best out of it. And let's just do this with Coretta right now. And let's tell the people who hate it, you have a point. You don't have to tell them they are wrong or something. Just say, give it a chance. Wait until it's functioning. Wait until you see the sidewalk. Wait until you see the bushes and flowers and, and that's what I would suggest.
John, since you brought it up, I'd like to know if you like it.
Mayor said go around.
Okay, sure. So I was most shocked at the size of it. I mean, obviously the plans gave us the height, the dimensions, the setbacks. The plans were the plans and the writing was in black and white and green. But seeing it come to fruition was shocking because the setback doesn't look like it's 45 feet. It looks like it's right off the sidewalk. And that, and it looks like it's looming. And so I agree with, you know, just about all of Diana's suggestions. I mean, 3D renderings, not just of the structure itself, but of the neighboring structures. I mean, this is even happening with single family homes. They bring us plans and we're all, and they make up something about what it looks like. There's no real context, you know, they dummy in other images, other properties and hypotheticals. But you don't see, you don't see it in context. You know, when large buildings are built or a museum is redone, you often see like a scale model. There's a reason why they do little, or they used to anyway, before GIS, do scale models so you can have a sense of it in context. So I think that that's most shocking and that we, whatever legal mechanisms, and I don't know what those are, that's for our council to perhaps make suggestions. What we can do, I don't know, you know, I'd like to hear from Gemma on. I don't know, you know, I'd like to hear from Gemma on, on, you know, an overlay district and things we can put in place now for any impending projects that doesn't violate the Senate Bill 180. You know, anything to show, better show scale or mass. The berm idea is a great idea too, if it's possible to create, you know, more green space or block out some of the structure with that. I'm open, you know, this is a sort of a land planning question, I guess, right? Or engineering question to some extent. And I would, you know, consult with all of our resources, our engineers, to see what that they would suggest because they have experience in crafting buildings and sites. So I'm, I'm open to suggestions on what we can do, you know, to mitigate that. Yes, they have the right to do the five stories, but it doesn't necessarily need to look looming. I, I know when it comes to parking and parking garages, I had, when Coretta was in front of us, I had done some research on, on parking. And there's a lot of parking garages, I think the Paris Museum in Miami, other places around the world, they have a parking garage, but it's got green all over it. It's covered in moss and plants and you can't even see it's a parking garage because it looks like a green wall. And I know that we have the salt air here and that might not be feasible, but there's other ways to make parking attractive and, and get creative with it. And that's what we should do.
If I briefly may on the issue of the renderings. We, there's likely a way, even with Senate Bill 180, to, to require renderings. We have to think about how to ensure compliance. But we actually think developers likely will have no problem with that because it will just help them sell their product. I mean, they're gonna pay to build them at some point, right? Whether if they do it at the front end or when they're ready to sell units. So they're likely gonna be happy to, to do that or at least not give pushback. That's our thought. But we can figure out how to be compliant with Senate Bill 180.
And, and if I may real quick, I just want to add, I think that's incredibly important if we can get developers to be willing to do that or, or require them to do that. Because on the staff side, and I'll foreshadow a little bit, you know, Frank has looked at this question of 3D GIS scene view and things like that. And it's going to take a very inordinate amount of time and staff really don't have the capacity to do it at this time. So they'd have to get training, they'd have to invest a lot of time and energy. So it is a much cleaner, probably more efficient and more effective way to get developers to do it if that's a viable path. I, I would be all on board for that viable path because I think the results of it will be helpful. But I have to be very careful about what our staff are trying to be committed to and, and the developer path is certainly the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I, John, to answer your question, I don't think it's a matter if we like it or not. It's what's in our code. And that's what they were allowed to do. And I think everyone did the best they could on the Planning and Zoning Board and the council to try and get everything we wanted, to try to have the building look as nice as it could for Juno Beach. And we did get a lot of public benefit from it, but I, you know, the, the tough thing is, this was our code. It was set, what, 30, 40, 50, you know, at least 30 years ago. It's been there all along. And I think anything that goes into Juno Beach, especially on that corner, is going to look like it's a lot because of our codes and because it was the first one in. And that's sad because, you know, we want the beach town and we want to see these smaller buildings and we don't want anything to change, but it is based on, based on our code. I think, Marianne, you're right, the landscaping is gonna make a big difference. And I think that hopefully it's gonna, you know, not look so ominous setting there and so, so large. And, and that's gonna make a big difference when, when it's time.
Why does it have to be so?
Yeah. Yeah, because that's what they do. They do it at the end. I agree, Diana, with the renderings. I'm not sure that the GIS aspect of this is something that the town should be doing. We should require that of the developer, I think. That should just be a requirement. Why would we pay for it? Why would we take staff time? And, and it's just a requirement. And if that's something we can implement, you know, without getting into any SB 180 issues, that would be great. I don't agree with the underground parking necessarily. I'm, I'm very much open, but when I think about somebody putting just regular parking, surface parking in, I think to myself, okay, that developer's gonna come in and they're gonna still go to the setbacks on the second floor. And then what do we have? We have the same size building, the same setback, maybe not density wise, but we have all this parking under, you know, and we're gonna look like a Walmart parking lot, even if they do it, you know, with the, with the concrete pillars. I can envision that and I don't know if that's a good look for our town. So it's something that we should discuss a little bit more thoroughly. What I see happening is, the rent, I want to go back to the overlays. Can we force an overlay on any of these developers right now?
That's a larger conversation. So I mean, we'll, we can come prepared to talk about overlays if that's a topic you want us to get into. We, we do overlays and we like overlays and you work with a good planner to make sure that they're good. CMA does a great job. I mean, we've worked with quite a few places that do good overlays, planning side. It's, there's a, that's a larger question that we can come back. I mean, it depends. It also depends like where they are, if they're in a development life, like where they are in their cycle, right? Like where they are, if they have vested rights, that, that depends on, so that's a larger question. But I will say that overlays are an option to explore. They may be a good tool. They, they can be a very good tool because they can be very specific and, and specific to a neighborhood. Because you, you know, you have a feel you want for a specific neighborhood. But we're happy to come back with a, ready to talk about a larger discussion.
So let's just take Plaza La Mer, for instance. If they have vested rights, obviously, what?
We do a point of order because John is talking about Coretta. So we shouldn't really switch around if we're gonna finish one topic.
I agree.
This is, well, this isn't important to.
Because we all have to get to our points.
But this is, are you, John, are you specifically just looking at the Coretta building or do you want to look? He did say how we can change it in the future going forward. And that's what, you know, Diana, you know, commented on the overlay. So I just wanted to go forward with that.
Can we make that in a, a discussion item for either a further, a, a future workshop or a council meeting after Gemma has time to maybe bring us more? Because I would need an education on overlay districts and pros and cons, so.
We, we could do, we could prepare a presentation about overlays for December. I mean, we need a little time. But I will say this, if a project has vested rights, the overlay would not apply. The overlay applies if a project does not have vested rights. But vested rights depend, we would need to look specifically at each project. You can't also only have an overlay over one plaza. Like the overlay has to be, it has to be reasonable. There's, there's metrics, right? So it has to be a reasonable area. It can be small. You could say five blocks, right? But it can't just, you can't drop it on one plaza. That's, that, that wouldn't be allowed. If I may, the reason they don't put the trees in is because the heavy equipment will crush the irrigation. And also while they're still painting, the paint gets on the trees. So they have to wait till they're done with all that, just, just so you know.
That's the reason I was important, that what I mentioned, it is because John asked, how do we change things moving forward? And one of the, the response to, can we do an overlay is, what's gonna happen after the moratorium is lifted? We're gonna see developers come in and quickly put applications in. And that's gonna be their right to go, you know, 60 feet. And so we, we want it. I always think we should be able to negotiate and I think that's an important thing that we figure out how we're gonna do that. And that can be another topic. So I think that was it on that. Do you want to go around again and have more comment?
Since he initiated the question.
Yeah, he started with his thoughts, so.
Oh.
He can come back in.
Did you like it or you didn't like it?
I didn't, I didn't say.
Right.
I said, it's a sequential thing to me. If, to start, what is the problem? If we, if we know what the, if there's a problem, what is the problem? And then we can look at possible solutions. But I don't think we agree on what the problem is. Marianne says there is no problem, basically. It's, it's a nice building. You like it.
Yes.
So you don't see it as a problem. And I think from, if I'm writing this, getting this drift, I think Diana and, and DeeDee, you're seeing the problem was that you were not aware of what the building was gonna look like when you made the decision to approve it.
No, but the bulk and the scale are the problem. The bulk and the scale are the problem.
Okay.
I think it's, it, the massiveness is shocking, but again, if it, it's to code and the set, we're following the setbacks, we're following the height. So it's just, I think what residents are struggling with is the surprise. Because what, what a structure like that looks like, flat on a drawing, is a lot different than it looks when it goes up. And I think some of it is just, you know, the shock of going from a parcel of land that's been empty for, you know, a couple of decades to a massive structure. And, and there's a certain, you know, period of adjustment. And yes, the landscape will soften it, but people are also protective of the way the town looks. And yes, we have large condos along the beach, but people have gotten used to that. So now when another large structure rises on a major corner of the town, I, I think it's shocking and, you know, we, I don't know how you stop that. I mean, yes, you can do overlays, you can soften it with landscaping, but if, if the code allows five stories and this setback, the question becomes what can you do to soften what is allowed or, or make it more palatable when change comes? And, and that's sort of a philosophical issue as much as it is architectural.
I see everything as a code issue, but that's just me.
The way I, the way I look at it, it looks exactly like it was on the plans. I don't, I, I never, I didn't think that there was a disagreement of the plans to what it actually looks like. It looks precisely like they presented it to. They, they did renderings. They showed it to us. The plans were, there was a few variations of plans. It came before the board and it got changed. It looks exactly like the developer, he didn't hide anything. It looks like it was drawn.
Saying it was a deception, I'm, I'm saying that the reality of constructing upward what was flat on paper is shocking. And, and that's it. I'm not saying that anybody did anything wrong. It, it's a perception.
So how do you address the residents not being happy with the, with the project? Or the sense that we got from Dana Little that the residents aren't happy with the project?
I could clearly see they're, they're not happy with the project.
Right.
It, to me, to me, my, my, I had different objections to what I thought was on Coretta. And I think you know what the objections are. They're different from yours. I think the big issue is open space in a, in a gated community. I'm a big open space fan. I think that's, that's in our DNA, that we should try to make things that are, that we can all enjoy as a group and not promote more gated communities. But apparently, the council's okay with gated communities off. And, and that's fine. So if that's not the problem, there's no sense like for me, looking to a solution to that problem. If you're okay with gated communities, but you don't like the way it looks as far as the bulk, the mass, the, and that that's the most important thing, is how it looks from outside that gate, that's another type of an issue.
I have a, a quick administrative question for Caitlin. What time is this meeting going to? Because my, my concern is, how much, are we gonna get to each go around and present one item? Because I had like 10 items and who's managing the time that we're gonna? Is somebody managing the time? What time is this over?
Well, it's, was for council one to three, but if you want to take it right before council hour at four.
We can do that.
So you are, at least get one item each.
So I think what I'm hearing, what I'm, what I'm hearing.
To six, from six to seven.
Well done, Mary. What I'm hearing is, you know, we've been able to comment on, on what John wanted and we're gonna have Gemma come back with the information on an overlay and kind of educate us with that, as that what we'd like to maybe start with.
Well, do we think the code itself is, is, I think Diana and DeeDee are saying it's the code itself does not limit the size of the units. I mean, the problem is, if you look at Juno Point, and, and that's why I always point out Juno Point. Juno Point was much smaller. It was approved in 2007. Everybody pretty much liked it. And the difference between Juno, pardon me?
It didn't happen.
Didn't happen. No, but it was feasible. The developer liked it, people liked it. And, and it's very similar to Coretta. But the difference with Coretta is these units are, are very much bigger. The 3,000 square foot units condos instead of 1,200 or 1,500 units makes the whole thing massive looking. If that's the problem, is the mass, the, how gigantic it is, yes, that's a code problem and we need some kind of an answer to that.
But John, I think we've got 18 units per acre. So it doesn't matter if you took and filled that whole thing with commercial, they're still gonna do their 18 units per acre because they can still make money. And those units are gonna be 900 to 1,100 like they did down here in the South. And then they were gonna keep them generational and rent them out. So then we have an issue there. We have the transients coming in and going, you know, getting breakfast or renting it for two or three months. So that, you know, there's always things that you need to think about. I'm not saying that we shouldn't discuss it. I'm just saying that that was the issue on, on those smaller units. It doesn't impact the size of the building. It, it impacts, you know, they'll still, they'll put in smaller units. They'll still get their 18 units per acre.
If every unit was smaller, a whole building would be smaller. That's what I'm saying.
Not necessarily, no.
At 18 units per acre.
Yeah. It wouldn't necessarily be smaller because they're gonna go to the maximum setback, they're gonna go to the maximum density. It's, it's, they're just make those units smaller and they'll make more money off of it making smaller units.
I agree with John that open space is important.
Assumption about somebody's.
Anyway, if we want to move off of this topic, then we'll go ahead and let Gemma do the key. Yeah.
I have one more comment too.
That's a pretty in-depth.
Can I make one more comment? Attachment A, the scope of services for Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, this was what was supposed to be decided with our master plan. Their task for deliverables is recommendations for revising and updating the town's comprehensive plan and the town's development regulations. And it was to address the community's concerns that were, that were articulated in the individual meetings and in the group meetings. And one of those has clearly been, you know, not another Coretta. So what do we do?
Well, that's something you can address at the master plan, but that's not until master plan workshop that we're having. Maybe address that, or we can address that at the meeting.
I disagree. We should address it at our town council meeting where we're deciding the format and the scope of the meeting with the work group. And I disagree with the, what's been proposed, but I could talk about that.
I don't, I agree, Dana. I just, that kind of secondary. So we can make that decision on November 12th.
And I'd like to add another comment regarding this, this Coretta thing. For, you know, I'm gonna say that there's, you can't make the assumption that just because a unit's smaller, it's naturally gonna be transient. And we have condos that are dark most of the year, half the year, because people are transient. So to somehow denigrate transient properties or the potential for transient properties and make assumptions, we have a rental community here in Juno Beach on the other side of US One. These people are integral members of our community, participating in, in things. And just because they're renters, some of them have rented there for decades, doesn't, you know, I mean, so you can't just say all rentals are bad because, and assume people are transient. Just because people choose not to have a mortgage or not to own a property doesn't make them any less valuable to this community. And I think it's, I'd like to hear that reframed as we discuss different types of, of real estate and what people are bringing us as, as ideas.
And DeeDee, well, my intent on that was just to show an example of what can happen and not putting our head in the sand thinking that this is not going to happen, but to understand and talk about all of it. That's a, I wasn't like.
I'm saying it's not bad.
No, I'm not saying.
I don't think it's a negative thing.
Well, I'd rather have people that are vested in our town full time that, and not, no, this was not people owning them. This was the developer owning the building and using that. So it's a little different.
And that building of Juno Beach is, is, somebody owns that building and people are renting in there for decades.
These are many units. This is one building with, you know.
It doesn't matter if it's separate units or one unit.
That's up to, that's up to all of us, right? We can all discuss that. And, and it's, it's a good way to bring that out though and have that discussion. And I think that's what's positive, to have that discussion as well. Did you want to say something, John?
Yeah, if I briefly may. So we, we have, as a firm, we have a ton of love for Juno. And we, we very much respect your processes. And this might not be an idea you like, but one of the things we've sort of observed in our study of you, we're like anthropologists, right? Is that, that's right, we're cultural anthropologists. It, we, we might recommend a day, like a, like a retreat. We'll, we'll notice it publicly. This is totally permitted. Governments do this often, every year, two or three years, with the goal to be to come away with a mission and a vision for the town. And then that can drive your decisions, your planning, and give staff direction. Because all of these challenges are not challenges. We can just point at a gun and shoot and pop, it's done. These are large scale, holistic comp plan, complicated problems to solve. But I think part of the challenge is that so much of it is reactive, right? The public is mad. They see this thing, it's low, it's, they feel like it's lurking over them or it's hulking. And that's reaction and that's reasonable. And everyone feels that way, I think, about anything new. Change is hard. But I think sort of coming to the beginning of mission and vision, what do we want? What do we want Juno to be in 50 years? And then building from that, I think it might give the people that work for you and these, whether you get different consultants or, you know, and the staff, and I don't want to speak for your team, Rob, but it might give everyone a helpful path, roadmap, so that we can bring you solutions that get you to where you want to go. So I guess I would say if you're open to it, I would consider a retreat with the goal being, where do we want to go? What's our vision for our town in 50 years? And that will give everybody, you, future councils and the, the people that work for you, an idea of how to help you and how to get the town where it needs to go. So just putting that on the table.
Great, thank you, Gemma. That's nice. Okay, do we want to go to another topic?
I would just like to ask, there is a 45, uh, yeah, uh, foot, uh, setback, right? 45 feet, what would you say the length of this wall is? You think, how about, how about our policeman who is very, what would be 45 feet? This or? Oh, four foot four, yeah? Oh, look, he, he is a detective.
Okay, and you.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, so it's, it's quite a distance. So it's wrong to say that the building is sitting right at the sidewalk or on the road. There is quite a big distance, room for benches, room for, uh,
Right.
There are trees, uh, room for people walking. So, you know, we are not talking that, I'm used to Europe and there are actually houses right on the road, you know? So for me, 45 feet, it seems to be a lot of greenery, a lot of things that can camouflage what is behind there.
Thank you.
And dress it up and soften it.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to Diana and if you want to go ahead and bring up one of your topics.
How much time do I have? Do we already?
Well, we gotta go, everyone needs to go around. So it shouldn't be something that takes.
Well, I have four quick ones and then, then.
On the same topic, only one, just bring up one now so everyone gets a chance.
Yeah, you got, you game the system and you win.
No, I want, let me have my two, let me have two, three, two minutes. Uh, three, two minutes are, I'd ask for council consensus to have our town manager give a report at each town council meeting as an update as to where we are on our strategic plan. This was a high priority in our goal setting. It was approved by council and it was stopped abruptly. And I think that we need to get an update every month as to where we are. Can I get a consensus on that, please? Okay.
I, I like the idea of getting an, an update on a variety of things each meeting, including, including the strategic plan.
Oh, okay. Here's another thing for update monthly, uh, process and procedure improvements. That was part of our goals of when David Dias was here. And that's one of, uh, that's a strong point. So we should get an update on those monthly as well. Can I have a consensus?
More specifically, you mean what processes and procedures?
Well, I know that some that I've discussed with Rob before, uh, check writing, I guess. And he's made several, several changes and they all seem like good changes. We should all talk about that and have that good information that we can celebrate, so.
Yeah, I, I think we're trying to get perhaps a little overly specific with what the manager needs to say each and every month. Rather than trying to enumerate individual topics that the manager is being directed to update on each month, why don't we just agree that the manager can bring updates that are relevant, timely and related to council goals, including something like, uh, new processes or procedures updates? Because if the direction is manager must talk about these items every month and the manager's coming up and saying, well, we don't have one this month, you know, it's, it's, it kind of sets it up to be awkward. I think just keeping track of where are we headed, you know? And what's been done to advance the goals and objectives in general as a conversation monthly, I think is a, a really good and productive way to engage and, and have conversations about, you know, strategic progress. But individual bullet points, um, are probably a little bit too in the micro, micro focus areas for these meetings. And I'll just illustrate one. Let's say for instance, the strategic plan. Well, what I've done with that so far is I've gone back and I've revisited the work that Mr. Karas did. I've taken a look at the goal update sheet that gets generated once a month for council, which is really awkward and not well done. And I'm saying, well, how can we integrate these things to be a little bit more effective and efficient and make it more professional in appearance? So strategic plan wise, I've taken that document. I've created a new one. I've got it formatted and indexed. I'm writing a town manager's introduction to it. Is this the kind of thing that would be helpful for the public or the town council to hear on a monthly basis?
Yes.
I don't know that it would be.
It would be helpful to me because it is a high priority. So I want to know that you're working on it. So it's, it's, it's something I would like.
But what I'm saying is on, you know, like this, this measured pace may not be the best way to do it. Apart from saying, hey, here's an update, town council. Right now what I've done is this, you know? And then at the next milestone, I could report again without it having to be a forced conversation that maybe other things would be better to talk about. So I'll leave it at, at that, but I think a.
Well, we've already gotten a consensus that we will get an update on this monthly. There, your update, the contents of your update, the bullets in your update. None of that has been directed towards you, but we have asked for an update. This, we were supposed to get the document in April. In my mind, this has been languishing since April. So I would like some communication on it on a monthly basis.
And if I may, Rob, you're talking about doing this on a monthly basis or when it comes up? Are you talking about doing it in the goal setting? Are you talking about doing it as you make progress?
What I'm saying is there can be things of a nature that Vice Mayor Protem Davis is requesting that are brought by the manager to the regular council meetings and related to council and the public. And that can be done without having to specify a set list every month of, you know, speak to these 10 items every single month. Let's, let it be a little bit more organic than that. Let me identify things that I think are of interest to town council and the community and continue to chart progress in achieving the various, uh, goals and objectives that town council and the community have. If that doesn't work, then let's revisit it and try and make it more specific. But I, I just don't think we need to have a laundry list of exact items, uh, which may or may not have good updates to provide because it, it, it may not be a productive path to walk if we do that. I think we can accomplish the same thing, uh, but leave it a little bit more flexible and, and see how that plays out.
And I'm going to retract my consensus because I don't disagree with Rob on that. I think that if he feels it's necessary to report, we know that he's understood you, Diana, and understood that you want the strategic plan especially to be, um, to be brought forward and, and know what's going on with that. So, um, is everybody okay with what Rob has, has said he would do?
I personally don't understand. How we manage to make meetings more efficient by adding more items on the agenda and being more specific? This is like a contradiction. Let's have this, 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 but at the same time, let's make it shorter. Let's make it more friendly of, for our citizens. So, I mean, you can't just overload these meetings. You have to prioritize.
This is about Rob and allowing him to report, do reports.
Yes, I mean.
So are you okay with that? With him doing what he's suggesting versus John? Just so we know what direction.
It up to Rob. I think the message is we, we like regular updates on a variety of things and the strategic plan.
All right.
So.
The council meeting, on the comments from the, from the council, comments from the manager and staff. I think they should be expanded, you know, and give us an update on, you know, whatever. The, the traffic studies and the workshop that, uh, we were going to have on traffic, for example, on strategic plan, whatever, whatever.
Go ahead.
May I know what we.
Marianne, let's, let me, let's receive, I know.
So, um, my thoughts on that, I'm going to go back to my suggestion is that we ask the manager, get consensus to have the manager do a monthly manager's report, which is just simply blurbs of updates. I don't know if that's sufficient to cover some of what Diana is talking about. But again, I would point to everybody just going to the Lake Clark Shores website, looking at Joe Labello's manager's report. It's basically two page or one page front and back. And it's just, it's like an activity report, but it's, um, certain, you know, progress on things and, and essential updates from the manager. And I think that would be fine. But any, anything staff can do to keep council updated at the meeting, because there is a segment of the agenda dedicated to staff reports or staff, comments from staff, that they should make good use of that time and give us updates. And it's useful for the public who's sitting here to hear those things as well.
So maybe as we move forward, we've got consensus, Rob, to, to do what you were suggesting, but then maybe take a look at the Lake Clark Shores site. And then you can report on that during your, um, comments at the next meeting next week and see if that's something that you can integrate into it, as DeeDee has said. Okay.
Sure.
Is that good with everyone? Okay.
The CMA code review, to me, those are very important. Those are, give us the details for our subjective harmony review part or for the, for the various reviews and its improvements for our code. And I think that we could, uh, move forward with those also on an overlay district. And they should be drafted and then anything that, for those codifications can occur after Senate Bill 180. The, the other thing on meetings that should, the meetings with the private developers. When I knocked on doors running for office, that residents were overwhelmingly opposed and viewed it as a conflict of interest and, and viewed it as deals being made behind closed doors. And we know that that's not true, but I think it would help dissuade that if the minutes of these meetings were provided to all of town council. I've not met with the Holiday Inn Express, which I know other council members have. And I have not met with Bucks Farm for, um, Plaza Lamar. And it was in the activities report that other council member has. And I think we should get a report on it. In my mind, the sunshine law would not prohibit that because it's like going to a lecture. You hear what the person has to say and then you, um, you just don't comment back on the individual comments that that council member made to the developer, but we should be able to hear it. And I think that that should be incumbent that the, uh, staff member who attends that reviews those and make sure everything's included. So we're all up to speed. Can I get a consensus for that? For meetings from those, uh, developer meetings, our landowner meetings.
I don't, I don't see putting another burden on staff to, to write up a report.
No, I think the council members should write it, but then staff reviews it. If they're going to meet with them, they should write down what they talked about.
What's a no?
I can't, I can't.
Marianne?
I can't agree to that. It's just burdensome, more burdensome. I think there are more important things to do here for us.
Reviewing the language of that document, it actually, I talked to Frank about it yesterday. Um, it actually says we shouldn't meet with the applicants, so.
The property owners, developers.
Well, I don't know. I mean, anybody can own a piece of property and maybe they're, they're 50 years away from doing anything. It, it only says app, we shouldn't talk to the applicants and our agreement was to bring a staff member. If no one's put in an application, then technically we can meet with these property owners because they're not applicants and nor are they developers. They're simply property owners at that point. And we have the latitude, because they're our constituents too. So we have the latitude to speak with them until and unless the point where they file an application. And now that applicant has become a developer and that's when we meet with a staff member. So I just wanted to clarify that language and, and maybe we need to take another look at that. But I think if we meet with a property owner who hasn't filed an application, maybe just wants to ask questions, introduce themselves, whatever, I think we can, um, during our comments, we could, you know, report.
But it's not a benign friendly chat. We're in the process of doing a master plan. We're in the process of developing overlay districts. We're in the process of putting all this into paper. So somehow it would be finally codified into our comprehensive plan and a requirement for, for that piece, that parcel. So I assume the conversations are directed at these processes. And that why, that's why it's important for the town council members to know what was discussed in the meetings and for, um, the community.
I don't know. Is that, is that typical, Gemma? How, how would you suggest?
This isn't part of a quasi judicial proceeding.
That are reporting to each other for transparency purposes and sunshine.
So at, at a quasi judicial proceeding, each of you have to give a report of everyone you have spoken to on the topic. Full stop, under statute.
But we don't have a format for those reports. If we had a format for those reports.
Statutory format required, you're supposed to.
But some people do have formats.
Is that after application or even prior to application?
It, it is after applica, they wouldn't come before you for a quasi judicial unless they had an application.
Correct.
Right? So it's the application that triggers it, right? So if your best friend lives next door to you and you've been friends for 30 years and then they submit an application and it goes to a quasi, you disclose communication about the project from when they submitted the application forward. And you don't have to disclose the contents of your discussion. You say, we discussed the project. This is who I met with. And you would name me, Rob, everyone, the staff members you talked to. That's your whole list of who your expert is with. There's statute that says, um, if you do not do that, it is presumed that the conversation is prejudicial. But if you disclose, that should remove the presumption that it's prejudicial. So, um, that's just a quasi requirement. So presumably you've already all been doing that and you'll just keep doing that.
DeeDee?
She wants a report from whenever we talk to any, I'm assuming, commercial property owner, not private property owner, sorry? I mean, you specifically, commercial or mixed use property.
Especially while we're doing the master plan and while we're anticipating code changes for master.
I mean, I'm happy to give a verbal update. We could all give a verbal update on our activity, but I don't know that it's a benefit to start adding, you know, written summaries of meetings, you know? But I, I think if we all report out with what our meeting, um, an overview, what we learned and what we spoke about, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, if I may, I don't want to step on your toes, Vice Mayor Protem, but this is a fairly litigious place. And creating all of these public records about every conversation, I mean, you'll have, you have a staff member with you, but creating these public records, I, that you are not statutorily required to create or required by your code, would probably say, but why? I don't think it's necessarily helpful. And if they ever bring an action and they say, yes, I'd like to see all those reports. And then they say, oh, well, look at this day at this time, this person was this. And I, it just seems like, uh, you're potentially opening, and maybe not, maybe we'll never get litigation, but.
Okay, okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah, and I, I have to agree with everyone else here. Um, I think that, um, we do meet with a, with a staff member. And I bring my, um, planning and zoning member in as well. So there's other people there in the room. And I think from a community standpoint, you, you have to let the residents that might be afraid of that know that we're working in the best interest of this town. We all do. I don't think anyone here is not going to do that. And, you know, anyone can speak like openly about, and we can just say we've met with somebody and this is what we discussed and, um, there's no problem with that. But I don't think doing minutes prior to any, any application is necessarily required. All right, Marianne, we're going to go to you. Um, Dan, you've had a.
Should we? I have two more handouts.
You've had several though. Can we move on to Marianne? Cause we're running, we're getting short on time here. Marianne, do you want to bring up one of your agenda items?
At these meetings?
Policeman?
Of course. Then it's really, then we have, you know, I mean, we can videotape them. We can have, uh, all kinds of, uh, controls.
All right, so we're moving on from that.
I like the idea of having a second person there in the room because it just looked better.
Okay.
But I mean, you can really, I mean, if citizens don't trust us, they shouldn't vote for us.
Marianne, we're going to let you go with one of your items next.
I, there are enough other items that people have. I see the papers.
You had managing time in council meetings as one of your.
But you know, at the same time, everything is being suggested to make these council meetings longer, to ask for more reports. I don't see that we are on the trend of doing that. I see we are just going the opposite way. Micromanaging, specifics, details, et cetera. And very few decisions, very few. I think like John hasn't even answered yet the question if he likes Coretta. I mean, how difficult it is, yes or no? I mean, how difficult it is, yes or no?
I did give you an answer.
No, you didn't. Now, please do. That's the same way you sit there in council meetings. You're never given an answer.
Okay, hang on now, let John answer then.
I'm sorry.
Well, let me give you, let me give you an answer. No, I'm not thrilled about how it looks, but the quote unquote.
Hey, I don't care.
Let him finish.
He doesn't like it how it looks.
Well, let him finish why, Mary Ann. Well done. Let him finish.
That's my personal, as, as far as council, I wasn't on the council, I was on the planning board when it was approved. They do have that right by code, and it's a, it's a question of, is it an acceptable trade-off for what we did get? And that's something I can't answer because I was not in the, in the loop as far as a council member. But personally, I'd like to see it smaller.
Okay, let's go back.
But I'm not saying that we could have got a better deal either.
I don't ask you the question. I only ask the question, does this a yes or no answer? Do you like it or do you not? I had no trouble saying I like it.
Okay, we're, we're going to move on. And Mary Ann, we're going to concentrate on, Mary Ann?
I just can't understand it why people can't just, people change their minds from one vote to the other.
We have to stay on task here, so let's get an answer to managing time in council meetings. I can make.
Did you like that idea about the workshop the week in advance where we have the discussion about the agenda?
If, if that helps.
I can drive that for a few months.
If that helps and it helps us get through the agenda items, that's the key. If it's going to prolong it and, you know, we're going to still have people that are going on and on and on and we haven't had some resolution, then we're just doing it doubly, right? But I have another suggestion.
So for several years, I've been suggesting a pre-meeting workshop, and I'm going to say it again. Just watch the Tequesta's pre-meeting workshop and you can see the framework for how to do it and make it efficient. They, they have a specific, short agenda, four items or whatever it is, five items, I think, I know they put a limit on it. And just watch that meeting and we can, you know, do a template of that. And then I think it's efficient, but if we try to reinvent the wheel and create our own system, I think we're doomed.
And I'm not, I don't disagree. I think that that's nice. I know that if we can come in and make that decision and vote at that, at that meeting because we all have the information. I think the, the problem is if you're not going to go to staff and you're not going to get all your questions answered, then we're going to need to do this. And we're going to need to have all that preliminary so that we can discuss it and go through it. So it's not a bad, I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm saying it's, yeah. It's an okay idea.
Or an observation.
Go ahead, DeeDee.
No, I, I don't think the problem in the length of our meetings is due to us not asking staff questions. I think we asked staff plenty of questions. I think it has to do more with a disagreement of point of view amongst the five of us. I think we have, as much as our goal, ultimate goals for the town may be the same, we have very disparate ways of, of speaking about it, presenting it and processing it. And I think that's just what's eating some of the time. I, I don't think it has to do, I don't think it's, it's staff's fault.
Right, and, and I think once you've made, you know, you've talked as a council member and we know your position, you don't have to keep going over it because we understand this is the way you're going to vote and we've heard that information. But here's a thought. Robert's Rules of Order, we start with three minutes each and we try and do that and we're, we're hopefully being successful at that. But Robert's Rules of Order, if I'm not mistaken, gives, usually gives each council member 10 minutes in two different sessions. So we could implement something like that and say, okay, you've got your three minutes and then you can have 10 minutes and then you have 10 minutes after that. So if that's something that council's interested in, in following Robert's Rules of Order, that could shorten the time period that we're at the meetings. Is anybody interested in following that?
This isn't about that, but I'm, and I'm happy to turn that to your colleagues, but I was just going to suggest, so, so Robert and I could work together on the agendas for the workshops. And the, what I have used in other places successfully is that it's only the items that are controversial, right? You don't put the consent items, you know, we're going to approve this contract for this $3,000 dog shampoo or whatever it is, little things. It's the stuff that is the meaty stuff. So the agenda for the workshop likely would have four or five items. What you tend to spend two, three hours on in the meeting discussing, you just do that in advance. And that way, when you get to the agenda, and you might at that meeting start saying, we can move this to consent, the consent agenda. We all are good with this contract that we've hashed out about, or this letter for the fire department. Yep, let's move up to consent. So then when you have the council meeting, hopefully you've moved some things to consent and hopefully you've hashed out all the things. And then maybe you want to implement some time limits on the council meeting because I do just think the goal is to get you guys to your comments so you can speak to the people and speak for the people. So we are happy to work together on the agenda. You could do it for a few months, see how you like it.
Okay, and John, I'll go ahead and go to you next on.
Like the pre-agenda meeting, and I think it'll make our council meeting shorter.
All right, Diana?
Agreed.
Mary Ann?
I agree.
Okay.
Yes.
We've got.
Okay, so.
All right.
Are you, are you finished with your topics?
Am I finished with?
With your topics that you'd like to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I got a complaint from a resident regarding the lights in the police and town parking lot. They said that they're glaringly bright. Did anybody else receive any complaints from residents regarding the lighting being too bright at night?
No, I haven't.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up. I don't, I always think that lighting around a police station is, is good. You know, I, I asked the resident to, you know, send the council an email with particular concerns so you may get something from somebody who had a particular issue.
Your whole item on that.
No, no, that's my whole item. That, please, John, you, you had, you took the first hour, so. The, the campaign treasure reports and finance reports posted to the website, I'd like consensus to post those documents. I know other municipalities do. The council gives consensus for staff to do that?
I don't agree with that. They're publicly available through the state.
That, why make people jump through hoops? I, I see, I see other municipalities doing it. I, I saw it on Miami's website.
It's just, it's hard to get anybody to run. And if you make more obstacles, then we're not going to get any residents who want to participate at all.
To the transparency. I, I think the elections and the financing, you know, it, it makes it more transparent to have, they're scanned anyway, those documents, so why not upload the PDFs to the website?
Yeah, that's not bad. There's nothing to prohibit that, and, and places do do that. That's your preference though, as a body.
Anyway, that.
They're available through Caitlin if somebody requests them.
And I think they have been requested through Caitlin before. People just come in and request them if they want them.
Is council not in favor of posting them to the website?
Why do you compare us with Miami twice already?
I'm just giving an example.
Yeah, but I mean, Miami, you know, it's.
Because Miami's been very successful. I don't, I don't know. Maybe I like Miami. I, I, are you picking on me?
Okay, but let's stop, let's stop, guys. Let's go into, no, I'm not, let's say.
It's an odd thing to focus on.
Can I make a suggestion? This is from Zach. He just sent me an email. We could put a link to the state website on our website, and that way they don't have to search for it.
That would be.
They could just go get it, but they don't have extra tasks.
Great solution. Thank you.
Good job, Jack.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, Friends of the Arts, there, there was a resident email from Nancy Wolf that we received, or I think you may have received. It was regarding the fee that the Civic Association was charging for their event. And the question was about, can a private organization charge a fee to attend an event at, you know, a public building, you know, funded by taxpayer dollars? That's not what I'm questioning right now, but it did bring up a question from the Friends of the Arts who wanted to fundraise when they have the grand openings for an art event. Can they put out a donation box, you know, donate to the Friends of the Arts? I was told that staff said they're not allowed to solicit donations. So I'd like to discuss about the legality of that. Why can't Friends of the Arts ask for donations?
I can't answer that, but I can answer about the other, we did, we researched this yesterday. We spoke to Rob about this yesterday, about the, what, the event last night, the Civic Association. So we, I guess the accusation was, are they the government? Are they the city? Are they not? We researched this. They are a nonprofit. They are a 501(c)(4) under the IRS. They have been for many years. They, a Florida nonprofit for many, many years. And they have, they currently have active status with the IRS, like as of that day. And I guess the manager provided the resolution that the, it's one of the organizations that the town supports, and it's been past practice that they get to use the space. Certainly you are permitted to charge for events at public buildings. You, we, the town can charge for events at public buildings. There are costs to all these things and it's not, it's not unreasonable to say, oh, Ad Valora must pay for it or whatever it is must pay for it. Certainly it's not, we have clients all the time. They might have an event at a park, but they charge for food, they charge for alcohol, they charge, that's, and then they make money, which is perfectly fine and acceptable. So that is fine, that's permitted. We certainly would encourage them to have insurance. The manager advised they did have insurance for the event. Now I will say this, if we know an organization is not a not-for, is not a not-for-profit, either a Florida not-for-profit or a federal not-for-profit, they only need to be Florida. They don't have to get the IRS status. If we know they're not, then we should not allow them to fundraise on our property because we know. But if they say to us, yeah, we're a Florida not-for-profit, here's our SunBiz, here's our annual report, we're active, there's no issue with it. I think they just need to demonstrate that they're a not-for-profit.
So the Friends of the Arts is a informal volunteer group of the town. Residents, some non-residents volunteering their time to create these art shows and, and things like that. So they're not a not-for-profit. They're, you know, a quasi-town group. What's that is, is that?
So, I, I mean, I would recommend two things. They can register as a Florida not-for-profit. It's very easy. It's like 150 bucks and do it the same day on the Florida website. It's super, super easy. The other thing they could do is if they want to be formally affiliated with us, we could establish them as a closely affiliated entity, but we check the, the comprehensive annual financial report. So we, we are very familiar with these types of entities, like special purpose entities. Some governments have them. If they're, if you have them, they have to be included in your annual financial report. You do not have anyone in there, so you don't have any entities that are closely affiliated. It is complicated. You do tend to want IRS status for that. The easier, cleaner move is if you have a board of people, they could do the Florida not-for-profit status, which is just SunBiz. They don't have to register with the IRS. Then there's a form that they fill out with the state, so we all know they're not-for-profit. That would probably be the easiest.
Let me just add one more thing. The other thing is interesting, they are entirely funded by the town.
So it, I think that's, yeah, I, I would say that, I'm going to say this, that's also not an uncommon, so like many communities have Main Street organizations that are standalone nonprofits and entirely funded by the government. So like the city will give them their entire budget for the year because they can't make any money on historical preservation, right? And they're just trying to get grants. So that's not a weird situation. And those Main Street organizations can fundraise because they're nonprofits. The key is you have to be a nonprofit to fundraise. We, the government, can charge for things. We don't fundraise, but we can charge a fee for things, for services or food or whatever it is. But it sounds like it's not us, it's like.
Volunteers.
Quasi.
It's residents running, you know, the show.
Yeah, and they do a beautiful job.
Yeah.
That's one thing I want to emphasize is Amy and her group, Friends of the Arts, are doing a wonderful job with art. We wouldn't be blessed with the imagery we have in here today without them. I'm not sure if Amy was aware of the SunBiz approach to registering as a not-for-profit. So I'll reach out to her after the meeting. My prior conversations with her are like, Amy, can't you guys get, you know, a not-for-profit status? Maybe she was thinking of IRS, 501(c)(3)(4) or whatever, and that just seemed like too much. So we'll have another conversation with her because it's a very worthwhile purpose. It's just these legal, you know, hurdles that we have to kind of clear to get them properly authorized.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think, Gemma, in order for them to solicit, they have to be a, a non-for-profit, correct?
They do have to be a not-for-profit. Now, I would say this, if you all wanted, you don't have to do this, you could designate a committee that is a town committee, and then they are of us. You guys could say, we're going to form the Friends of the Arts Committee. It's an official committee of the town. We're each gonna.
And that has some separate pros and cons that might go along with that and.
Would it make them sunshine? Would it subject them to sunshine? Could that be a problem?
There was a team to create these art shows, so they need to.
Yeah, yes.
So I think sunshine law and it also, you know, by virtue of being perhaps a SunBiz Florida not-for-profit, they may have some flexibility in their review of candidate art projects that if they are made a part of our local government, become a little bit trickier due to First Amendment rights that we as a governmental entity have to deal with. And most of the most effective relationships that I've had with citizen arts groups, they've all been independent not-for-profits, not only because of that issue and the independence they have in judging art, but they also open up potentially some grant opportunities for them to seek funding outside of, of, you know, Ad Valora taxes or local contributions that without that designation or status, they would not have available to them. So there's, there's a, a pretty long tail to how governments and art-oriented citizen groups engage with one another. And again, just to button it up, my past experience has been the most effective ones are independent groups operating as not-for-profit status, which is not to say you couldn't consider otherwise, but that's something to consider.
Yeah, and that's a good point about funding because it would allow them to get funding that they couldn't get if they were just of us.
And I want to just go back to your solicitation box. I, I think if we allowed one, we'd have to allow all of them, and then that becomes, you know, if we kept it out, the rest of like the historical society and the Civic Association.
But they are nonprofits, so they can.
I know, but the semi-finish. If we're putting boxes out in front and allowing, then we have to allow everyone is all saying.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
I, I meant during the event.
During the event. Okay, so sorry.
Not a box sitting in the lobby all the time.
Okay. And they're allowed to take, I mean, if they're, if they're actually a not-for-profit, they'd be allowed to do that, right? To take?
Yes. If they're a not-for-profit, yes, they can definitely take donations.
Sorry, DeeDee.
The last item I'd like to talk about is how to help Juno Ocean Walk with their flooding problem. During the vulnerability workshop, there were about 15 residents from that community with concerns and complaints about the flooding. They said that in the past, those yellow condos on Juno Ocean Walk did address their runoff, which helped mitigate it to some extent, but now the other mobile home park on US-1 was told by ERM that they can't drain their runoff into the natural area. So somehow their runoff got diverted into this Juno Ocean Walk community. Plus there's runoff stormwater from US-1. So I would like council consensus to have staff work with the Juno Ocean Walk. The property manager was here to reach out to them and see what our responsibility to them is. They are talking to engineers. I think they're also talking to legal counsel. But Juno Ocean Walk, that road, that is, I guess, the, the northern boundary of our town is our responsibility, and I would hate to see, you know, that we're not doing something you know, that we're not doing something drainage-wise that we should be doing to help them. So.
Rob, do you want to comment on that? Because I know this has been something that I think Frank has checked into.
Yeah, why don't we just have staff prepare a memorandum to circulate? So at least we understand what the actual history is and whose roads are what and what's led up to now. And then we can determine what the, the next best step is, if any, for us. I was pleased to hear that they were trying to find their own engineered solution on private property that was being negotiated between them and the engineering company and possible, uh, filtration and things of that nature. So having gone that far, I suspect they may already have some of the answers to the questions, knowing that it's largely a, a private property issue. But I'm just guessing based on what I heard from them, we'll definitely have a memorandum prepared that solidifies some of the facts around it.
Identify what our onus of our responsibility is. And, um, if somebody could reach out to that property manager and, you know, get backup material from her and whatever their engineer found, maybe that'll help Diane.
Oh, I would give consensus to have staff work with them. I think it's important and they did all show up. So, uh, it's important.
Yeah, thanks. And the other item that I think we all talked about, it was a group item, was the.
Can we go back?
Yeah.
Before we, we said we have one of the consensus. This is a longstanding problem. We've, the town's been working on this for forty years. And there's a long history, very detailed history before we decide what we're gonna do about it. I think the first step before we got a consensus on what to do is get that history from the town manager.
I totally agree because we work with them. We don't know what that, unless we get that history and we're actually, we have the ability to have staff report, then.
I think to DeeDee's point, a memorandum would be a good idea, but not direction necessarily to work with them to solve the problem until we understand the history and what the leverage points are.
I mean, you could work with them to get their history and, and what they've done and what they've done most recently also, you know. The other, the sort of group issue that I don't know if we resolved was the master plan, um, format and what we expect of the volunteers who signed up.
Okay, so Rob, do you want to give us, um, an update on what staff has maybe, is maybe suggesting?
I thought we have an item on the next agenda that deals specifically with that. So, so in the agenda packet, there's some information about that, but I can highlight it real quick nonetheless. Um, what we were envisioning is with twenty people, that's kind of a large number of, of people to sit in a round, in a round table. So instead, uh, what was suggested was that we have breakout tables and we'll have a series of tables with hopefully roughly the same number of people at each one. Uh, proposal from staff was to include one council member that would act as a facilitator at the table, uh, not necessarily guiding the conversation or the answers, but making sure that we properly understand what the members at the table are communicating to us. Uh, each table would have a scribe, um, and we would have roving staff and, uh, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council professional support moving around the room as those conversations are taking place. And, uh, people could raise their hand, call us over, ask a quick question, what have you. Um, we would have a preset, uh, number of questions and maybe some other visual aids, like a map of the subject properties, and have each table answer those questions and discuss it within their table environment. Uh, after some period of time at the meeting, each table would then come up to the microphone. They would say, here's the, how many ever questions, this is what our table felt, either they had consensus, they had divergent viewpoints, whatever the case may be. And the consultant would capture all of that information and feed that back into their, uh, development of their report. And that in general is how we imagine it playing out. And that's all in the agenda packet.
All right. Um, so I have a couple of questions within that. Um, first of all, how, how is it decided who sits at which table?
I'm gonna try to randomly assign those because we don't want necessarily people to.
Blown together.
With people of a like mind. We'd like to have different perspectives at each table. So.
Staff has a method to randomly assign people.
We're still figuring that out, but we believe we have one, yes.
Um, you said there will be a list of preset questions. Who will determine those questions?
Um, well, we've been working with the, uh, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. Staff are saying, what would be helpful to learn from people Treasure Coast to help shape and inform your recommendations? I think the, the questions will be sufficiently broad to.
There's four in the packet. You could read those four. We could talk about them because I had problems with the questions. It's only one, one, questions are on one sheet. That's not two sets of questions.
Okay, all right.
You could pass those questions out to everyone?
I mean, we don't have to discuss it now. It's an agenda item. I just was gonna spend the weekend looking at the council agenda. I haven't gotten to it yet. So I, I'd like though, the opportunity for council members to submit questions because these are our residents. The, these are the people we're accountable to. And, you know, I know Treasure Coast is very knowledgeable in, in master planning, but I, I think it's important that we have a say in what we're asking. You know, our, our neighbors, our constituents too.
I, I totally agree. I'm afraid that the master plan procession is going to follow the September eighth, uh, newsletter that Rob Cole put out because it's, it describes that more of like, and it's my understanding of what it describes. And I, I, I can hand out that statement too. But I guess I could read it. Anyway, it's more about developing a single parcel because you're under your existing code, you're under your existing comp plan. And when we initially contracted with Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, it was, what's the next, what do you want the town to look like in the next thirty or fifty years? And that, that's in those questions granted. But I'm afraid that number one is what's our current codes, you know, and how are you gonna get beyond our current codes? And I think that's too limiting. Also with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, their contract, the very first thing is we're supposed to have a community vision. And I think the work group should work on the community vision. And maybe we can't have a work group until we have the resident survey because the resident survey should, should, you know, tease out this community vision. So, um, that, that's the problem I have. I think I'm concerned that we're gonna get stuck with, you know, the, that, you know, we've met with the property owner, this is what the property owner, what's the highest and best use for this parcel according to the property owner? And why would we pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council for that? When our initial review was, what can we do for the whole town? How can we fix our codes that have been written to incentivize development? Twelve stories for, uh, uh, assisted living facility, for example, or, uh, you know, depending on the uses, you get extra floors. What can we do with these codes that are, that were written at that time to, for, in the best interest of the town, but maybe that's not what we need right now? So that's, and that was why I brought section four from the action plan that said they were gonna review our codes. And so if we had this vision of what we want the town to look like, then we'd know the codes that need to be fixed. And even if it's an overlay district for now, we could still work towards that direction.
I, you know, there has to be an entire education at this, this master planning work session so that, you know, we want to hear from our residents. That's the main goal of this. Not to direct them a certain way, not to tell them what we want to hear. It's to hear what they want. What do they see? What's their vision? And I think, I know it's, it's a step that we can't quickly say, okay, this is what we're gonna do. But it's a step that I think is important from a transparency standpoint, from bringing them along with the decisions that we're gonna make in the future. Because there are decisions that we will be making soon. And they have to understand why we might have to make those decisions. Why did we choose Coretta? Why should we have, you know, done something different? And I think that, I, I think we have to concentrate on the residents a little bit more on this than, than too much guiding, but give them the whole overview of what we're dealing with. And as I'm looking at this, the questions, um, I think we should talk about those questions, DeeDee. Do you, you don't have your book with you?
I didn't know we were gonna review the agenda today.
Okay, so we can do that on the next meeting.
Number one is existing conditions. Two is character and identity. Three is infrastructure and environment. Four, what are the trade-offs? And the way I read the questions is we're gonna tell the community members, these are our codes. This is what you get. Senate Bill one eighty's in place. We can't do anything different. So since you're stuck with this, what size condominium units do you want in your current shopping center? And I just think that's gonna be a crash and burn and people are not gonna be happy with it. I, I would rather have a community vision first and then work on these items.
We could go over the questions. Like, if Caitlin could make me a copy, I'll, I'll look at it now.
Mary Ann needs the copy too.
Just to reset ever so slightly, um, I think it's good to read through quest, read the questions. Determine whether or not we think the questions are gonna solicit the kind of feedback that we need from the participants to help understand what their viewpoints and perspectives are, their vision, if you will, for success on those sites that this study is focusing on. Yes, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council is supposed to and will suggest any necessary code amendments to, uh, adjust to whatever public feedback we get. But you don't start with the code amendments, of course. You start with, first of all, helping people under, to understand what our current codes allow there. So that's the first step in the questions. After that, do they like what the current codes allow or not? If you don't like what the current codes allow, then maybe there's a case for change, right? If you like what the current codes allow, then what are we talking about? Because there's no need to change. So the first thing is, what's the, what's the case for change, if there is one? After that, character and identity. You know, considering the types of potential redevelopment that could occur on these sites, what do we like, not like, prefer, not prefer? And as we continue to build, as the discussion goes on, what levers do we have to press? Some of them are code language. Some of them may be, uh, tools that we can use. Uh, I, I think even Vice Mayor Pro Tem Davis mentioned earlier, things like lot coverage or parking requirements to get things that we want from prospective land, or landowners and prospective redevelopers. That's all part and parcel of this and nothing in terms of what actions we can take from a regulatory perspective is foreclosed. But, uh, with SB one eighty, we do have constraints. So there could be a continuum that says, you know, uh, up until this current state should change, here's some things we should consider to get what we want, or at least more of what we want out of any applications that come in. Beyond that, here's other things we should consider along with whatever discussion that must accompany those from a risk perspective, once we get into that kind of conversation. So none of this is, uh, as was described earlier, and I, I think it's a lot more positive than that. It's, it's not pro-development. It's not constrained to, you can't do anything because of SB one eighty. That, none of that is true. We should make the most out of this opportunity to listen to our residents in the community, to hear what they want to see differently. You know, we had a conversation of Coretta, about Coretta here earlier, and you guys said some of your things. Let's, let's let our residents and our business people and prospect, or landowners and prospective developers that are invited to this session be able to have some of those same kinds of conversations and capture that feedback. Then we'll have a survey that goes community-wide to every mailing address after that. Then we have another work session that's planned, not work session, but a, a community workshop that's planned after that, kind of like a charrette. And we're gonna try and make that fun if we can. None of these things we're organizing have a predetermined agenda. They're not e- established to constrain people's viewpoints, perspectives, or vision. And I think at the end of the day, after we hear from everybody, it's going to be incumbent on Treasure Coast to, to present that back to us as what is people's vision of success for these sites? That's not community-wide because we're not talking about single family up here on the hill, on the ridge when it comes to the master redevelopment plan. Look at the map. It has the sites specifically highlighted with colors that we're talking about. So we've got to really make sure, since we're paying a lot for this study, that we focus people on the right areas and get the information we think we need to define what success looks like. A vision by any other name, but with some strategies that we can actually begin to implement to influence positive change in a way that our community would most support it. And yet recognizes that people do have rights on those properties and there's things they can do right now that we may or may not like, that we can't stop. So do we need to do something or not? That's what this is all about.
So, um, I just read through these and, um, they're more geared toward residents. We asked business owners to be part of this workshop too. And these questions, there should be something here that is at least geared towards the business community and there aren't. So, um, I would ask staff to craft a, a more business-related question or two. One, that's a question, you know, residents, um, you know, residents, how do you feel about the businesses? And I know that you did a, a survey that staff did, that residence survey about businesses. And I would bring that back for the workshops because now you have residents and business owners together. People might not be aware of the results of that. I don't think those results were ever published or put on the website or anything. So um, I think it's important for residents to see how other residents weighed in. And another question on businesses here, um, you know, maybe the question, I can't frame a, a question all of a sudden, but you know, as a business owner, or if, as a business owner, or if you were a business owner, you know, what top five things do you need to be supported? You know, financially, economically in the town of Juno Beach? What can we do to help you succeed economically while contributing something to the town? Because our businesses do contribute to the fabric of the town.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to get a few more business questions in there because the, the businesses that I've talked to actually don't mind Coretta. And they don't mind the residential because it feeds into their businesses. They're like, we're, we, you know, wrapping our arms around this. We're not that upset about the residential, which is quite interesting when you hear that. So it's, it's gonna be good if we could get a business person at each one of the tables as well.
I don't know if there's that many.
If we have that many, but.
If we have that many, I think that's a challenge.
The interesting part of some of, I mean, mixed-use development, commercial and residential, it's a double-edged sword. And that's why, you know, businesses like development because it brings them more customers. So it's, uh, something we have to find that balance. And maybe there's a question about mis, mixed-use versus hundred percent residential. You know, so you have the Pulte project going in with no mixed-use. So we're not adding any more economic opportunity. Even, you know, we talk about sometimes, oh, we're gonna lose our businesses, or they might be displaced by future redevelopment. Having new retail space, and we always say, oh, it's gonna stay empty. It's not needed. It's saturated, all this. Maybe there's some businesses in town who want to grow and they would grow into a larger space or, or move into a different space. And we need to have that kind of, the way I see it, and I'm not against commercial, you know, it has to be balanced, but maybe we give them inventory. So now when they're ready to move, like I know the, the gym, he's wanted to expand for years, but he's afraid to because he's gonna invest money in a building that could potentially be gone in a short amount of time. But if there was another mixed-use space, he could move into that space. And then another business can grow into his space. So I think it's, it's, uh, it's about spokes on a wheel and how each feeds and nurtures the other. And I think that's something of what we're trying to create here is a vision that, you know.
And, and there's a lot of information that needs to be brought out on that, like retail. We can't tell them what kind of retail to bring in. So then you have to incentivize them to bring the retail if they will. They don't have to because they're gonna do something more commercially geared probably and just fill that space that they need to fill. But that's where you get into negotiating and incentivize, incentivizing them to do something for us, whether it's looking at, you know, lowering the, the rent, doing some kind of rent control. I'm not sure if that's even feasible, but you know, all of those issues, we need to be able to negotiate. And if we don't have something to negotiate, they're just gonna build it. And they'll build their twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, call it a day and leave. And I, I, they bought this on knowing that it's twenty to twenty-five percent. So they know they can do something. They're not going away. They are gonna build. So we need to think about all this. We need to have some reality into what they will do if we don't, you know, kind of understand. The other thing I want to say really quick is I had a conversation with one of the communities and I said, I think we're making a mistake because we need to look at total build-out. Like the total build-out of Juno Beach, what is that gonna do to our traffic? And, uh, because we're in trouble. We have a unique situation. Going back to the Coast Guard, they should give us a break on the, the bridge going up and down. We have the ocean. We have, uh, Ocean Drive. Then we have US One. The closest, I think, US One comes to the ocean. And then we have the bridge that goes up and down. So we're a little unique than the other communities of trying to push federally to get that bridge to maybe not open every half hour. But I think, I, I think we need to really look at future total build-out and go backwards from there, perhaps.
So what I'm concerned is, is that we have the community here and we have a group of questions and we're looking on redeveloping Plaza Lamar, which I think that this should be a larger scope. And we, it's, it's not a redevelopment plan. We call it a vision and master plan. I think vocabulary is very important. It starts with a vision. And we don't have a vision yet. So we should work with this group to create a vision. The question should be geared towards a vision. And I don't know that it's appropriate to do that until we've had the resident survey. And then this group can work on steps for that, steps towards a master plan.
So when is that survey supposed to be done?
I want to let John and Mary Ann weigh in on this too, because we're doing a lot of talking and we need to hear from John and Mary Ann.
One, one thing on the timing, we have a few Coretas barreling down the Pike Alley.
Which ones? What, I don't know any.
Plaza Lamar, the, the Holiday Inn Express.
Do we know that for certain? You, you, you both have said that there, it's barreling at us. Do we, have you talked to somebody who knows?
Said there's a moratorium that expires.
And you know that, you've heard that they are imminently putting in an application?
I, I, I know a, a guy bought the prop, the, the Holiday Inn Express.
Okay.
He bought the Fish House. He didn't buy it just to run a hotel.
See, now that's interesting. I, when I met with him, I didn't hear that he bought the Fish House. Is that?
It's new. It's just new. I'm just last week.
He bought the Fish.
From John Bills?
Yeah.
He came to Dogaween. He was here for the Civic Association Dogaween with the dogs. And, and he told me that, um, he bought the Fish House. He said, I live, I, I learned about the guy. It's the first time I met him. He said, you know, I think he bought. He said he lives here in town. He lives in Surfside. He's a developer. He's developed different places. His girlfriend, his wife is from San Francisco. You know, he seemed like, he said he didn't, he, he said he doesn't know what he wants to do with it, but he bought it. I guess he's got some money.
What's his name? Joel? Is that Joel?
I, I forget his name.
So he bought the Holiday Inn Express and now he just bought the Fish House property?
They, they had a little table.
It was John Bills.
John Bills owned the property, but the guy, Teofio, owns the restaurant.
So anyways, you know, he's not, he said, I think somebody reported that he hired an architect to say what he could do with the property, you know, what if this, what if that? So he's probably gonna do something. I'm just guessing. I mean, it looks like he's gonna do something with it. So we're gonna see an application. Plaza Lamar in a few years. Plaza Lamar in a few years? Plaza Lamar was giving out, what, five-year leases? They probably have an intention to do something.
Yeah, something I did hear when in a meeting with them is, they have their leases through December 31 of 2030. So those are, those are good leases through then, they won't do anything before that.
Longer we delay this master plan and do anything to postpone it, is, we should get a master plan in place to protect ourselves, to make the situation better as fast as we can. And we should not delay it. That was my point, that's my only point on that.
And so these overlay districts, going back to the overlays, is an overlay not subject to the 180 restrictions? I mean, is that...
A voluntary district.
And you can give landscape breaks, or maybe parking space breaks, or something to incentivize it. But it wouldn't be, you wouldn't necessarily have to give height incentives or density incentives, or something that would be objectionable.
So setup of 180 applies to all new regulations and changes and restrictions. However, you can still make changes, you just have to use incentives instead of, it's carrots instead of sticks, right? So there's a lot of ways, and, you know, a lot of places use like TDUs, like transfer development rights, right? So the TDRs, they'll allow things like that, or they'll be, they'll let you have a density bump if you do X. So there's creative solutions to all these challenges. And I know you feel like you're staring down the barrel of a gun, and that's scary and hard. But I will say, these things are always messy, they always, they're always messy. But, you know, you all love the town and get there. But it is, there's a lot of tools in your toolkit, but we don't, we still, I guess I would say, like, everybody, everything needs to come together holistically to give you all the tools to do what you want. But it will take a little time to assemble your toolbox.
So to Diana's point, thank you, did we do the survey first, or do we do the master plan workshop?
I don't think we can cancel that, that master planning workshop right now. I think we've got everybody on board, but...
And what's the survey supposed to go out?
So, so a few different things. One of them, yeah, I think it's a little bit late to cancel this, and I still think this can be productive, and I think it's going to be helpful, and it's an opportunity for you to really drill down with a smaller group of people. The survey itself is still in the works, and we're trying to get the document together. We anticipate last quarter of this year, between staff, town council, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, staff, when I say staff, I'm including our legal counsel. So between all of us, we'll get a list of questions finalized prior to the end of the year. They'll get the survey circulating while we're still in season to all of the mailing addresses in Juno Beach. And then it's going to take them 60 to 90 days, most likely, to complete their analysis of all the results, to prepare a report, come back and present it to town council. Following conclusion of that survey, we wanted to then have the charrette, where we re-invite open, you know, the entire community, businesses, residences, property owners to come and participate in that charrette. We'll have our survey results available to discuss. It'll be somewhat similar to the format of our workshop that's upcoming, but it, instead of being limited to certain people, will be open to everyone. So we'll get a second bite at the apple when it comes to this particular type of setting. And this one might just be a good way to kind of test float some of the questions and see how they play out, and see what kind of results we get. And do we get results from it that we thought we might get? Are they helpful in developing a vision for these sites that is informative to Treasure Coast, so that they can make suggestions, both ones we can do on overlay basis, and perhaps later, to the extent that town council wants, and the community feels they're needed, some other measures that might help respond to the ultimate vision of success for commercial redevelopment in Juno Beach. To John's point, and while he's, you know, kind of making a gut feel, best guess of how, what his read of the land is, it's probably true. You know, if you, if you paid $27 million for a piece of property, you're probably not thinking about holding onto it forever, just like it stands. You probably have a plan to do something, we just don't know the timing of what these landowners might plan. And we don't know what they're actually planning. But from a community's perspective, we should keep moving so that we understand what our community's pulse is, and what our points of leverage are. And then one last thing I wanted to say about the, you know, the incentives and the overlay, you know, I don't even really view them as incentives, because people have been using that word in our community in negative ways, right? Oh, you're incentivizing development. No, they're not really incentives, they're negotiation tools, it's toolbox. And why is it a negotiation tool rather than an incentive? We're not incentivizing them to do something. We're actually community-focused rather than pro-development-focused. We're recognizing development rights, and that those are things we have to, you know, move, move around and recognize. But at the same time, everything we're doing here is, is community-focused, not trying to give away the farm, but to get public benefits from projects that otherwise, we may not get what we want from.
Let me ask you, how did Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council fail so spectacularly in their in-progress master plan, that nobody wanted just condominiums? And how did it fail so badly, if this was the great approach? I think we have to do something different and start with a vision.
Well, it was your scope. I think it's a scope, and really having that scope narrowed down.
We have scope, and we have a document that's signed.
But, but I don't think the scope was, was enough, that's why I didn't vote for it. I'm like, this is not, you know, we're not...
Well, I wouldn't vote for just redevelop Plaza Lamar, I don't want to...
No, 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 I mean a scope and getting more detailed, like you're saying, Diana. But I, I think that, you made a good point, Rob, about incentivizing them. It's incentivizing to do the right thing, to do what's best for the town. We're not incentivizing them to develop whatsoever.
No one can convince me that 90/10 is not an incentive for developers.
Well, that's what the, the master plan, that's, or that's what Treasure Coast came up with, we didn't come up with that. So that wasn't, we never told them to do that.
The formula, they were just taking the Coretta formula of 95/5.
I don't think so.
And using...
I don't think they were...
If I may, for a moment?
It might be a coincidence. I mean, that that's what got Coretta built, was 95/5. It didn't just come out of the ether that they said, oh, let's do 90/10. They must have thought the council was amenable to that.
No, no, I think you're wrong. I think that's a speculation.
It's next door. I mean, why would you, why would they not, in their research, see, oh, this was built with a 95/5 residential versus commercial? I mean, it's just the obvious. For it to be purely coincidental would be bizarre.
But as you know, that was a sliding scale. It wasn't 5%. It was, when we did that, it was a sliding scale between 5% and 25%. We could have made them do 10, we could have done 15. At the time, the council made the decision, that 7.8% commercial was enough commercial on that corner. They've got 26,000 square feet. Again, we have to put the square footage to this. You can't just say 5%, 10%, 15%. If you don't know how much commercial is going into that, that's where you're going to get in trouble with the traffic. That would have been 65,000 square feet of commercial, had they had to do 20%. That has to be looked at for every site. And so if it's an overlay that we do, and then we can incentivize them to do what we want based on less commercial, we need to do that. Not because we don't want commercial, not because we're not going to keep the commercial, and not that we don't want to add to the commercial that's already there, but we don't want to overdo it, because the traffic, we're not going to get up and down those roads, and that's why we need to look at total build-out and work backwards, and see what we need to do. Because we can't do it on each piece and say, okay, it's fine to do 20%, and they're going to do it. They'll put it in, and they'll go. And then we're stuck with the traffic. Mary Ann, do you want to, you haven't talked for a while, so I want to give you a chance.
I also feel stuck with empty shops, et cetera. Because just look at the UPS trucks, look at Amazon. I recently needed a shredder. I didn't go anymore to Office Depot. I ordered it by Amazon. The package was delivered, it was so much easier. Now, let's say, I personally think that retail is almost, is a dying art. Because what we need are shops that provide a service that you cannot order from Amazon. You need hairdressers, you need nail places, you need cleaners, you need, help me out, you need insurance people, you need doctors' offices, but you don't need somebody to sell screws. Because in order to make money in a hardware store, you have to sell a lot of stuff. And where do, where does the supply come from? Where does the demand for the supply come from? So I personally think we have to look at retail in a different way. Services now, yoga places, gyms, you don't go anymore to buy, hardly any goods, except grocery. And there, I already noticed, they are getting delivered too. Now, what I also think, when we talk about a ratio, 25% versus 75%, if I reduce it, it's 1 to 3. You cannot tell me that three residential units cause more traffic than one commercial.
That's not how the calculation works. The 75/25.
Well, in general, Mary Ann, what you're saying is residential does not produce more traffic than commercial. So maybe not phrase it different.
Dava has 425 visits a day. So you can't tell me that three residential units will produce that same.
But that's, what Diana's saying, that's not a ratio that has anything to do with traffic generation. That's a ratio of residential to commercial, but it's, it's not a parallel comparison to any type of traffic metrics.
And the residents that I've talked to are all interested in their local businesses staying and getting their services local. And when Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council talked to us, they said it's much more complicated than just the Palm Beach trip generation report. Because if you can get your services local, then you, as a resident, are on the road less time, and so it actually does help relieve traffic congestion. So it is, it's complicated.
So when it comes to the master plan questions, maybe these are other questions that we need to put either into the resident survey, or, you know, into the workshop, or in both places. And, and talk about, not get into the percentages, because I think that just, it's difficult. And, and we could do a whole seminar on those percentages, but about the uses, and the types of things people, the types of service they would like to see. And yes, we don't, we can't ask a developer to build what we want and say, oh, we need a shoe store, or veterinarian, or something.
But do you want your services locally, or do you want a gated residential-only community, where you drive across the bridge for your goods and services?
It could be exactly questions that are geared towards teasing that out and helping inform.
Rob, is it possible, I mean, this has been a discussion point on traffic in residential and commercial. We really need somebody that we all trust to come in and say, this is what's going to happen, this is what you're looking at. Because, you know, there's different various opinions, and we can all have our opinion. And there's the Palm Beach County that gives the traffic reports, there's the traffic engineers that give their traffic reports, but we have to know for our town what this means. If we don't know what that means for our town, we're going to make a mistake.
We have 121,000...
Hold on, there are not the...
...shopping right now in that commercial area, so we know what traffic that is.
In which one?
Plaza Lamar.
Yeah, no, but that doesn't matter, when they, listen, Diana...
And everybody turning left is going to Jupiter anyway, so we need the Marcinski Bridge.
What you're missing, hold on, guys, let me finish what I was saying. But what, I'll talk about what Diana just said. That's based on just what's there. And they start to build up, it's based on your gross square footage. It's not based on what's there, and they can build up, and we're fine. They, your commercial is based on your gross square footage. So if it was 20% for Coretta, instead of having 26,000, it would have been 65,000. Do you think we could have handled 65,000 on that, that corner? No, we, I don't think we could. And I think we're going to be in a lot of trouble, but we all have different opinions on this right now. We need the professionals to come in and tell us, not for us to have, you know, we're not, we're not professionals at this. Let's get the answers, so we don't make a mistake, that's all I'm saying.
But it depends how you use those numbers. If you look at the trip generation numbers as a set of numbers in and of themselves, then commercial of any kind is always going to generate more than a household. It's just the way the numbers are. But when I talk to different agencies or other people who are professionals, it's about the quality of the commercial. And, and that's why mixed-use is popular, because there's a certain quality and benefit that it brings to the community. And so, yes, you could do the traffic numbers, and people might say, well, 100 extra car trips per day in my community, I'm willing to accept 100 extra trips, because the quality of that service, that the Pilates or whatever it is that, that it brings me, I'm willing to accept that. And that's, I think there's a question here about trade-offs. So some level of traffic may be acceptable to residents, because they feel they're getting a benefit.
But, you know, you can't dictate the retail, or what...
We can't dictate it, but, but...
You're right about...
To incentivize it.
You're right about the medical office is less traffic, professional office is less traffic, it's retail that brings the most. So that is a factor in all of that. But again, we have to know, we have to know what this means to our town.
There, this is a suggestion to consider. You could invite a traffic engineer to do a presentation on their methodologies at the December workshop, and then help you formulate a question about traffic that's specific to your town, derivative from that methodology discussion and workshop, to include on your survey and in your roundtables.
That's not a bad idea, but we want somebody that's not associated with the town necessarily, because they're a little intimidated. They're like, okay, I mean, they're intimidated.
Yeah, I would, yeah, we'd try to get like a Kimberly Horn, like somebody who is big, who does this all the time, who's got clients all over South Florida, and who's, does these a lot. I mean, Kimberly Horn, I think, is doing one for Okeechobee for us right now, and there's other, I mean, there's big firms that do this, that have these traffic engineers. And they all, all the big firms have them, because they do them for their impact fee studies, because that's, that's what drives a lot of their transportation impact fees. So they, all the big firms that do that type of work have these engineers. So I'm sure, I don't want to volunteer your services, but I'm sure the manager could get someone good to do a presentation, and then help you come up with a question about that.
We know what the number's going to be, you know, retail and commercial always generate more traffic. So what are we looking for in, in, what's the goal? What's the traffic engineer going to provide us? The current traffic numbers and a traffic projection, based on different types of development. Say, okay, if it's 100% residential, the projection is this, if it's mixed-use, the projection is that. But it goes to that philosophical thing of the quality of the mix of retail, commercial, and medical, or whatever other uses, that is sort of philosophical and unanswerable. No engineer is going to be able to tell everyone what's going to make people happy in this town 15 years from now. I don't know if that's true.
But if we did have a business development group, or we had some sort of, you know, our, the heart of, in our mass, in the strategic plan, which is why I think the strategic plan is so important to be completed, but that was suggested that we have a heart of Juno Beach, or, and that be our business group, like, and, like a Chamber of Commerce. And, and, you know, maybe, I don't know if that would be the group, but we would try to attract these businesses that perhaps didn't have their traffic during peak hour at, in the evening. Because peak hour in the evening, we fail all the numbers in a particular intersection, at a particular stoplight. So maybe we need businesses like more the medical field, that wouldn't have their peak hours in the evening. So, you know, there's, I think there's ways that we could do it if we had the information, and I think Kimberly Horn or somebody would be a good idea. But it is trade-offs. You know, we love our local businesses, so that has to be like non-negotiable. So how do we keep the space that our local businesses are in, and then plan for the future, kind of thing?
So DeeDee, and I'll come to you guys in a second, because we're doing good...
Appreciate that.
Let me just answer DeeDee's question. To answer your question about what are we going to accomplish, so if we can all agree that we know what commercial traffic is and residential, then what it does is, it allows us, if we do an overlay, to really be able to incentivize them, the developer, to do the right thing, versus just not doing anything. And, because they will, they will build if we don't do something. Anyway, John, go ahead, and then Mary Ann, I'll come to you.
I think I probably forgot what I wanted to say.
One answer we got in a memorandum last week from the manager, was why Plaza Lamar showed up in the master plan specifically. And it's because it was in memorandum number one, I think it came out of a staff meeting in last October, that said, in a few examples, the consultant was going to focus on a few properties, Plaza Lamar was mentioned as one of them. So that's what the consultant apparently did. We didn't know it, we didn't get the memorandum of what the staff meeting was about until last week. We never got number one. And number one said... We never got number one. And number one said, as far as their game plan and how to move forward, they were going to look at a few specific properties and mention Plaza Lamar. So that's why Plaza Lamar showed up and we didn't know it. And because the staff didn't tell us that, the, the, Dana didn't tell us that. So now we know that's why Plaza Lamar was singled out and a few other properties were singled out.
I think that.
Go ahead, Rob.
I think the Treasure Coast also said publicly that the way they identified some of the properties that they initially focused on earlier than later, and this, what you're talking about, John, predated my arrival here. But in conversations that I've had with them since I've arrived, uh, and they've stated in public session, they did an economic analysis that looked at various, uh, commercial office-owned properties in Juno Beach. They said, what's the value of the buildings versus the value of the land? And the ones that had the highest disparity between land value to property value, they determined or believe based on their knowledge of economic development would be earlier targets than later targets for potential redevelopment sites. So that is actually not staff direction to look at Plaza Lamar, but rather economic data-driven analysis that said Plaza Lamar is one of those properties. And if you're not looking at this in terms of your master redevelopment plan, you're really missing the boat. Uh, because it was upside down land value to, you know, property value or building value. So it, that's, that's the larger factor that really drove Plaza Lamar becoming part of the conversation. And I'll, I'll want to add one other thing real quick because I was trying to weigh in earlier. The process that we've outlined here isn't what was used before Dana and his team came up with the concept for Plaza Lamar. So this is actually not the same thing that resulted in his conceptual drawings. And in fact, you know, when I came on board and I had attended before I started the meeting at, uh, Log Head Marine Life Center, saw what transpired there. One of the earliest conversations I had with Dana's team is we've got to do more public engagement. We have to hear more from the Juno Beach community about what they like, don't like, so on and so forth. We, we spend a lot of time right now talking about, well, we need to ask people about what uses they like. Why? Because we would like for them to be able to walk and bike to uses that they need. Well, one of the questions we're proposing is exactly that. And we, we spend a lot of time right now talking about how we should ask that. I, I would go back to DeeDee and say, DeeDee and everyone else, yeah, take a look at the questions. Walk yourself through them as though you're sitting at the table. They're in the agenda, which you didn't get a chance, that you didn't have time to look at yet. That's, that's what I kept trying to raise my hand for is saying, we're talking a lot about stuff that's right in the agenda packet. So read through the questions. Uh, Diana, take a look at them. Do they, do they?
Have looked at them.
So as you walk through them and everybody at the table, not, not one of us, but all of us, read them and say, do we think that we're going to get useful information based on what the professionals that have looked at this said we should ask them at this stage to help understand what their likes, dislikes, needs and wishes are? And then collect the information from the survey and come back and have more conversation. I think the idea of a, a traffic engineer to come in, talk, provided they think they can make a productive and meaningful, uh, presentation and, and help inform that discussion at this stage would be helpful. And with a four-hour session, there should be time for that, you know? That's another thing I'm cognizant of is we, we have to be careful not to overload the, the upcoming, um, work session with so many questions that, you know, our group is overwhelmed. But with a four-hour slot available, I think that's a lot of time. So.
I have to interrupt, Mayor. I have to leave in five minutes. I have to apologize.
I thought we were in the right day.
Okay. Well, great. Could I finish what I was saying, Mayor, first? I appreciate that. I asked, I, I'm, well, let me tell you, I'm pissed. Because I try to say something and people jump in and take over and go in off a totally different direction. Go for it. But let me finish what I'm saying. With the problem with focusing on promise, Mayor, I said, we got an answer. Plaza Lamar, the consultant picked out a couple representative properties. It's a minor thing. He picked a couple representative properties. It's no biggie. You don't have to spend.
You brought it up.
Who brought it up? No, Diana, Diana brought it up. And why do we pick Plaza Lamar? And why do we focus on that? And everybody wants to talk about Plaza Lamar. It's just he picked a couple of examples, okay? It's not, it's not something to focus on. The issue with 75/25 and the, the traffic and the thing that Gemma brought up, I've been listening to this pissing contest for two, three, four years. Every time we do this, everyone wants to talk about the same thing. How much traffic and how much does general? And it's, it's going on forever. The point is, you all want to argue about it. And that is, a consultant is not going to fix that. We need to move on from that. You bring the same talking points every time we have a discussion over and over. That is not helpful for getting anywhere. All of you want to say, I'm right and you're wrong. And that's pissing me off. I just want to let you know. I hear it one more goddamn time, I'm going to.
It's an accurate observation.
So John, I, I, I have to disagree. I think what we, we made a great leap forward today. And I think that leap forward was getting a professional to really talk to us and get to the bottom of it. The reason it's going back and forth is because everybody has different opinions. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I think we did, hopefully we can move past that because that analyzation is extremely important and then we don't have to talk about it again.
I don't agree. I, I, I agree with John. I don't think it's going to solve anything.
We have to solve it, DeeDee.
You don't, well, I don't think we're going to solve it because they're going to come back and say, commercial has more traffic. And then people are going to say, well, we don't want more tra- I don't, I think we're going to still go in circles. I think we're still going to argue with, with the findings because that engineer might come with data, but we're not going to accept the data. That's what's happened with John.
Exactly.
We haven't been accepting different data.
We don't trust anybody. We hire people for a lot of money. And if they don't, don't come up with what we want them to come up with, we don't accept.
John, go ahead.
Look, here, here, here's what the issue is about Coretta and what we're talking about. The code already gives the council the discretion they need to approve projects. The, when a project comes up like Coretta, the council can turn it down for any reason or no reason if they're under a special condition, the special exception category, the side area modification. When a developer comes in, the council already can say thumbs down to the project if they don't like it and ask for changes. But the council on Coretta decided not to do it. Now, we're talking about code changes. That won't change the dynamics of a project coming before council. And if the council decides they want to approve it, they'll approve it. And if they don't, they don't. So that's the issue. I think the, what people are saying is they don't trust the council to make that determination and vote in their best interest. They're approving developers' plans when they can already turn them down. And the council unanimously passed, Coretta chose to not accept their, not exercise their option to turn it down and says, we're going to accept Coretta. That's the basic problem. You can code change, and no matter what you do to code change, you change it all you want. That is still going to be there with the next Coretta. That's the problem we need to talk about.
I, I, I would suggest that we get a write-up of how that flexibility exists within the code. Cause it was my understanding that we had to apply the code as it is. If that's not a problem for us, hippie-tai-yay, we can do what we want. But that's not how I understand it. So that amount of flexibility needs to be fleshed out. And maybe our new council can do that. And I wanted to go back because I, 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 I agree with, with DeeDee and John. I think that the Kimberly Horn study is not going to be helpful. And we should just focus on the 75/25 as a method for slower growth. And, and if that is indeed our, our, um, goal as a community, then we just stay with the 75/25.
John, do you want to say anything else? Cause I want to make sure you have your complete time. Um, I think that one of the things council needs to do is quit thinking that we're, we know everything. We don't. I'm sorry. And if you are going to put your line in the sand and say, I'm not going to listen to the professionals, are you doing justice to your position and really understanding what's going to happen to this town? And just saying, I'm doing this and that's going to be it. We do need to look towards the professionals to help us. And if we don't do that, it's not really fair to our citizens. We really have to look at other people that can guide us. Cause we're, you know, for us to disagree with traffic studies, it's nationwide. This is not something that is just local. It's not just Kimberly Horn that would give it to us. So I think that's just the thing I wanted to say real quick. Do we want to move on to seating on the dais and resident complaints? You said something about resident complaints. Do we want to do that really quick? Because we've got 20 minutes. Um, Gemma, do you need to leave?
I, I, I think we should take a break. I don't want to go right up until four o'clock.
Okay.
I think it's, that's a little unfair.
Based on what council wants to do.
I think maybe the, the complaints we could talk about during the council meetings so the whole community or whoever's here can hear it better.
Okay.
I need a break.
Next to the manager though, so just save that.
I, I would, I would suggest, you know, I, I thought it made sense looking at other council meetings if you want to. Not that I wouldn't want to sit next to you. I would like that, but we're not going to.
I know. I always bring good snacks. You don't know that yet.
Okay, you're saying nuts to me.
Yeah. If, if you guys are good with it, I'm sure the clerk can readjust my location if you're okay.
I mean, do we want to do like Gemma, the town manager, and then go down like that? I, I ask, we, we don't know. We don't have to decide that.
You could start one way.
I mean, we could try it if everybody wants to try it. We could switch it up.
Do it that way and see how it goes.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll give it a shot. We'll give it that shot.
Okay. All right. Is that good with everyone? We're okay? Just trying it this time? We'll really confuse everyone. All right. Do we want to join, adjourn the meeting then, I guess? Meeting is adjourned.